That's the third.
It was a good, it was a valid one. I didn't agree with it still.
Good morning, everyone. We will start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would like to add a discussion on the Heartland Trail as well as a request to fill the Veteran Service Office position.
Under?
Under, let's put them under your report.
Under mine.
Okay. So five would be the Heartland Trail and six would be the Veteran Service. Okay, I can't. All right. So is there any other, is there any further corrections or additions or subtractions to the agenda? All right, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the changes. Uh, we have a second. So, uh, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, minutes from last meeting, February 4th. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
I did not have any.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I think we're missing one of the open form speakers. She spoke in favor of Scott Busker, that lady from the left side.
Lori Olson, that was mine, too.
Yeah.
Was she during open form?
Or no, or when? Yeah, it was during open form.
It was during open form, yes.
She spoke later.
Oh, did she speak later?
It might have been later.
Yeah, I don't think she did speak it. I think she spoke.
Did she speak?
At the, during the appointments.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I remember, too.
So that would be added to?
Under?
It would be under Kerry's report, right?
Or appointments.
Appointments, appointments, yeah.
Um, under Commissioner Nelson, I can't remember what emergency management, what that referenced, if it was, but it wasn't a meeting. We might have, I might have discussed something under emergency, but I don't think I had a, there was no meeting under emergency management, so just delete it.
Okay.
Under County Administrator Report, I am, under the first tour of the extension building, I think it looked at space needs, not just looked at space.
Yeah.
Be like, oh, very good out there. Um, and number four, on the same page, page two, bring to EDA Committee recommend and support. I just think it should probably read referred the request to EDA. I don't think we had a formal yea or nay on it, but, um. On number four of page, four of four, motion to second, that's approval of the Ford 150. I think we authorized it go to other agency, too, but.
Yeah.
If we didn't, we're gonna have to alter that.
I know, I had that highlighted also. We did authorize it to go to another.
Environmental, yeah.
Yep.
And the other, well, or other agency, because I think.
Or other agency.
NRM is interested in it.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
No, that's what I meant, NRM, yeah.
And then in motion, in number seven, it says, it sells, just to sell the old trailer because NRM wants the old trailer to, and sell their older trailer. So that's worded appropriately. So that's all, that's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else have any correction?
The only other thing, I don't know if we want to include this on here, is when we were discussing the Pelican watershed, I think it was Charlie Jaskin that had made a point of saying, like, he believed that there was no need to move the building, that that wasn't an appropriate spot for parking, and that he had suggested moving the door. But I don't remember if that was open form or if that was.
No, that was later. Charlie didn't speak at open form.
So I don't know if that.
That was under the discussion of the watershed.
The, maybe put it under the Pelican River watershed building update?
Yeah.
There was the appointment, which was one session, then there was the building. It was kind of a different conversation.
Yeah.
Probably under the discussion.
Yeah.
That that was a suggestion?
Yes, yep.
Anybody else have any corrections to the minutes? Turned myself off. I'm trying to turn it on and off, and I turned it up. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes with the changes?
Some moved.
Motion by Barry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So opposed, same sign, motion carries. Consent agenda. Is there any items that anybody would like to pull out for discussion?
I had some more, I'd like to have some more questions on item six.
Item six.
The investments, mostly. I don't know if we want to, how do we do this? Can we talk about this now?
We can talk about it now. Mary's here, could they answer any questions if you have any? So go ahead.
I would like to sit down and just, I think maybe this is a, to bring me up to speed, maybe this is a conversation outside of this forum, so maybe we could set up some time to, so I can better understand investments, our debt service, and just some high, high level stuff.
Well, there are some questions under investments that, that I would like to see, or have a question on also, under the recorder's equipment and recorder's enhancement, significant drops even from last month, but, you know, year to year, it's been a lot, but even from last month, it was considerable. So was there significant payments this month of recorder's enhancement and?
It was actually a transfer to IT of the equipment fund.
Let me just get a microphone. Every December, we do the transfer.
It's once a year?
Once a year.
I wonder if we should do that, is it easier for you once a year? Is it?
We could, yeah, I mean, we could do it every six months. Her revenues are coming back up, but keep in mind, those funds were depleted when she paid for half the museum.
Right, and the museum, and, I mean, we've used those, but I just was surprised to see such a big drop in one month, and we're in the negative, I'm.
Yes, it was $70,000.
The transfer to the, to the IT.
IT for equipment, for computers.
Okay. The other one was transit. Did we pay for a bus out of that, this?
I believe yes. There was a bus, yes, there was a bus.
I have to remember, that's not, that's year to, year comparison, but that was a pretty good jump down. So that was, that was my questions. And I did notice that our sales tax revenue is holding its own currently, but I anticipate that to be dipping a little bit in the future.
We're actually, yeah, we're actually down about $300,000 over last year.
Over, over and all?
Yeah.
So, any other? So we'll make a motion to approve the whole consent agenda, Phil?
You know, Mr. Chair, I would just like to, I just wanted to let you know, I'm gonna sit down with Mary and try to go through some of these high level numbers. That's all, because I don't quite understand it the way you guys do, so just, Mary will.
Anytime.
Yep, thank you.
Is there any other items that anybody would like to pull out of the consent agenda?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Barry, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Erica, all in favor of the contention, and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seems, all right, motion carries. Commissioners, open forum. Are there anybody signed up? Oh, wow. All right, so we'll go to reports and correspondence. Who would like to go first?
I can. Mr. Chair, uh, so just follow up from the last meeting, our discussion on the Pelican River watershed building out there, I know there wasn't, we didn't have consensus on that to move the watershed building, and that's perfectly fine. I just wanted to state that, you know, in 2028, we got a highway road reclaim or milling overlay coming on County 19 from County 6 down to Denton Locks. So that might be another time to revisit that issue if parking is a problem there, and we should know that by 2028. So that's just kind of a follow up from last, last meeting, just something I saw on the, that was gonna happen anyway. I had opportunity to tour the old jail from Sheriff Glander, very interesting. I toured the extension building with Linda, and then Brent Bresslin got me into that adjacent building where some of the sheriff's snowmobiles and stuff were stored, and then the impound lots there. Also toured the transit building with the boats and a lot more of the sheriff's equipment, which he said is all over the place, which I can see. And then I got to tour the courthouse by Brent, just through the whole facility. Had a transit meeting with Kevin.
Did you get a chance to go through the tunnel? The prisoner tunnel?
I did. I did go through the prisoner.
That's pretty, that's pretty, if you don't know your way around, I mean, there's only one way to go, but you're like, where the heck am I in this building? You know, you're like.
Mr. Chair, I went through, I couldn't find my way back out. So, thank you Sheriff Glander for bringing me through the maze safely.
Might have been a customer's.
Yep. So transit meeting on the 5th, just ridership is up. We discuss some things about fares and bus hours, and hopefully we can get some new bus drivers. So Kevin isn't driving bus all the time. He's a supervisor, not a bus driver, but that guy's really made sure that that department is up to speed by, he does everything that needs to be done. It was really impressive. On the 6th, I went to the Westlake Drive Road project with the city. Now, that project from Legion to the, uh.
Just passed.
Legion to the pavilion, basically. There's gonna be a lot of planning this summer. A lot of things were laid out, but the road project won't happen until 2026. But everybody should get up to speed on that, because that's, there's some really interesting stuff going on there. All good.
Yeah, that was a really, a really nice meeting. I thought, and most of it was, most of the discussion or the highlights were of what the city plans on doing on the beach scape. You know, there's a lot of that, but, you know, the county's responsibility is the road surface, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and the lighting. And the lighting, and the city's been real good. If they want to upscale the lighting, they'll pay for that extra charge. If they want to upscale the sidewalk stamping and stuff like that, the city takes care of that. So I mean, it's, I think Jim has a real good relationship, and they do a real nice job on that. The proposal was to have parking on the beach side and not on the other side, so because they're, they're enhancing other things, so that parking lane, they're talking about a parking, the city owns a spot behind there, and they want to put a parking lot kind of right behind lake shirts, isn't it?
It's right behind those garages by, by People's Park.
Yeah, so that.
In People's Park, yeah.
It would be, it would be east of People's Park, kind of behind Zorbas into the east a little bit there.
So, a real good idea. Actually, the total parking spots, then it would go down a couple. They talked about how that boat ramp would be affected, and there's still some, they're still trying to decide if they're gonna have it or how they're gonna have it, but they have a short U in there, so people aren't backing off the road, and I think that alleviates, you know, our biggest concern of the stoppage of roads. That was a, that's their number one option if they, unless they have just a walk-in carry access. And then overflow parking would still be at the fairgrounds. The Fair Board, I think, you know, has a good relationship with that. There was a discussion, short discussion, a guy wanted the fairground to be all paved, and I said, well, we don't own that. And I didn't, we didn't elaborate a whole lot into that it would be nice to have it paved again, but the restrictions that the city wanted to, if we were gonna pave it, didn't accommodate for the fair. So I think that's where the, that's where the rub is there. But I thought it was a real nice meeting, real good.
Yeah, it was a really good meeting.
They asked for all the input, what, you know, what, and for me, it's like, well, you know, this is your guys', you know, the beach scape's your guys', but here's my opinion on it. And they took that well, and what they do with it, though. They did have a lot of options, and some of that was, I think, was.
Cost prohibitive.
Yeah, well, the beach is the selling point. You don't need to, I mean, some of that, some of that extra stuff isn't as attractive, but some nice inexpensive highlights that you could accent, you know, a little sitting area here and there, especially if you're right across from Zorbas and you want to eat, and so.
Mr. Chair, just to finish up with that, you know, just at a high level, I just, I think it's a good way to view the cooperation between the city and the county. It's a county road, and I know we don't always get along, but I think our people, Jim and them that work together, will get along, and they will get this done. And I just, I'd like to see more cooperation between all entities that the county deals with.
Just, just a little FYI, you know, this, they were trying to get this done quite a while ago, but they weren't sure how they wanted to navigate. The county, instead of doing our regular, I mean, we wanted to do curb and gutter at that time, we just slapped an overlay on it. I mean, we ground an overlay. So I mean, we did that because the city wasn't ready, so we, you know, I think that shows that we are willing to work with them. Now, this, the pavement that we have down there probably could go on for a few more years, but, you know, milling overlay wasn't too expensive for that short run there. So it's a, you know, when they're, they're ready, I think we can move forward and make this a good project. And there's a couple grants, one trail and park, or trails grant, and then one, what's the, if Jim was here, he'd tell me the name of the federal grant or state grant that we got for one, was it 1.4 million or 1.5 million for this project, and?
Yep.
That all goes to all county, then. That's what I, that's what I said, no city.
All right.
I don't know where, how it's divided, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, then after that meeting, I had a meeting on the 11th with the Recreational Advisory Committee, talked about the Denton Locks situation, also talked about possibly putting some additional parking off Highway 59. It's a township road. I've confirmed with the township that they're okay if they put some parking there off Highway 59, Denton Locks Trail, right north of the Pelican River, if we could, we thought we had to buy some property there, but if we just use the right away from the township road, we may be able to establish some additional parking. So Jim Olson was going to come up with a plan for that, and that would be a nominal cost if parking does become an issue. Also talked about Eagle Lake Access, which I know Kerry's gonna get to in her report. Had the watershed rule on the, watershed meeting on the 12th, still in the middle of rules revision. It was good to see Kyle there with the MOU with the county. He was gonna send over written comments to make sure that we're talking the same language, so the customer experience is good. The city was also there, fine tuning some of those final rules revisions, as was Metallands. Scott Walls was there. And they've set up a special meeting for February 26. I'm unable to be there. I'm gonna be at the, is everybody going to the Legislative Assembly thing?
I am on the 26th and maybe the 27th if I find a room.
Yeah.
I am, I'm going.
But that'll be an important meeting, and I won't be able to be there. If anybody can make it, that would be an important meeting to be at. We're finalizing the rules for the watershed, and hopefully there's, there'll be collaboration with the county, and that'll all mesh up nice. On the 13th, we had a Heartland Trail meeting, Detroit Lakes to Frazee Trail, we already talked about that, but there are some unencumbered funds that have to be used from Detroit Lakes to Frazee, and we were figuring out maybe how that can be used. It doesn't have to be used till 2027. And Clay County is doing their studies, so we were kind of talking about how we could hook up the trail from Becker County to Clay County. And one thing, the DNR Kent Star, he's kind of the lead guy in that area, he said one thing, I pulled out of that, I thought was really interesting. He said, you're never gonna get a $50 million grant to do a trail from here to Clay County. He said, you need to do them in one to three million dollar increments. Well, you know, you got feasibility studies, you got engineer studies, you got all this work already put into it, but he said that's how they're paid out, in small portions. So he said, you're way likely, more likely to get a grant, a small grant than you are a bigger one. I guess I didn't know that going in. And that's all the meetings I had.
One thing with that, with the Parks and, or, we are hoping to get reimbursed for some of that money for the Parks and Trails back to NRM, because we did put some money in for that, for that wetland. So we are hoping that that money can then come back and get paid us off, pay that money back.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's so many pots of money, I'm not exactly sure which pot that was, but.
That was for the, the Heartland Trail.
So, so we did get some, some information on that. Currently, the money cannot be used for the reimbursement, but Jim, you can maybe help me elaborate on this. The, there is a possibility where we can fill out a claim to get more funding for that. Go ahead, Jim. I'm not sure what I'm talking about right now, so.
We have extra money left. We'll have extra money left from the bond funds, but that's been all thrown into the construction, and we simply had such good bids that it can only be used for construction based on the agreement. But that doesn't mean that DNR will not reimburse us to some extent for that wetland. They have to go through their process, through appraisal, and then purchase that from us, and they'll do that. So it'll take a while.
And they said specifically, Jim, help me here, those were for construction costs, not feasibility studies, not engineering studies, they were for construction only?
Bond funds, yeah, from 2020 to just going towards construction. There is 2023 bond funds. We got 500 or 550,000 that we won't need to use, and that can be used for the Harpland Trail, and the only designation is it has to be used between the city of Frazee and the city of Detroit Lakes.
That was the money I was talking about.
That can be used, see much for anything studies or improvements.
Acquisitions or easements?
I don't think, no, it's just, I don't think it was for that. It's just for, that was for construction. I think that was for construction as well, but it can be used for anything, like within the city.
Yeah, so like, there's no determination on, it says from the city of Detroit Lakes to Frazee, so there's no determination that it has to be, like, there's no definition of the city, where the city starts and ends, and where Frazee City. So you can do stuff in, throughout, through the city all, that's what Kent Star told us.
Mr. Chair, we had talked about possibly, you know, that the trail going up to Wantigan Park, it gets you to Frazee, but the trail up to Wantigan Park, is there a way that some of that could be used up there for, to get people on the bike trail up to there? You can get up to the school, but then back to Wantigan Park, could that be used for something there? But it's all in the talking stages right now.
Yeah, the bond they, it's for construction of the Harpland Trail segment between Detroit Lakes and Frazee, so we could do work and see if Frazee, if it became designated, uh, on Harpland Trail. You know, we could bring more out of the city, what these city limits, because we were planning to go out on 8/7 anyways, so we could look at possibilities of probably get there. Or even improvements here in the city. It could be used for that, so it could be used for, you know, park and ride, or kiosk, or rest areas, and things like that.
Who's, who would like to go next?
I can go next. Just addition to the RAC committee, we did also have conversation about, I think we briefly talked about it at our last meeting, about looking at the possibility of designating some of our county forfeited land to a county park. So there is one land specifically, specifically that we have identified in, for Chilton Park. So the plan is for me to go and have a conversation with the Shell Lake Town Board, just to make sure that there, we have some good open communication, you know, prior to us doing, you know, taking anything off of, because they would lose some of that PIL payment if we would do that. So just being a little proactive there. Also had Crow Wing watershed. The plan, the watershed plan was approved at the Bowser meeting in January, and we approved the bylaws reviewed and recommended the budget. So we are officially going with the Crow Wing watershed. Also had housing on Friday. We really just discussed our, went through a lot of our housing payments, claims through, for our public housing, and we're also having a conversation, you know, we're continuing to have that conversation of what to do with the contract next year as far as keeping it in-house, or keeping it at MMCDC or bringing it back in-house, and trying to really explore all of our options. And then.
I'd have to say, if you're, if you're looking at changing, I think the city Detroit Lakes would obviously be an option that you'd have to consider again, partnering with.
Partnering, having a conversation with them again.
And we did, we did before, but I, you know.
I know we did recently.
It's an opportunity for us to review that and see if that housing and even EDA are, could get some synergies out of it.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but if you don't look.
Yep. We also, we also looked, had a discussion about our affordable housing money that we have got from the state, state affordable housing funds. And we're looking at possibly using some of that for our Maple Avenue apartments. We'll be discussing that more at our EDA meeting on Thursday. Then I had Human Services. Much of what we talked about is on the agenda, but I did just want to make note, we had a long conversation about the new policy put in place for hiring, and I just wanted to make a point that, you know, Denise did let us know over at Human Services that they do really go through a lot before they decide to hire. The supervisors really look at what's the best thing for their unit, they look at caseload sizes, so they do look at all that already prior to asking whether or not to refill it. So they, of course, you know, there's some concerns with the policy that we approved at the last board meeting, with us having to go through the committee and then to the board before we can refill a budgeted position. So Richard and I had a lot of conversation, and we just said, you know, we would continue to listen. We, you know, agreed that they would contact us, you know, outside of the committee meeting if that's what it needs to be, so that we can get those positions filled as soon as possible, because those, even those positions are time sensitive.
Well, and it does, it puts a strain on people if they don't have help. I would like to relook at this again, because Barry, I agree, if there's no funding for the position, we should look at it, but if there is funding, I don't know that we, I don't want to slow that process down. I don't want to, I want to show good faith to our department heads. I think that's their job to decide whether they need, but I have no idea what the department heads need. There's no way for me to know. I know what I do in my business, if I need a pipe layer or I need a truck rack, I know that. None of you guys would have a clue. And what I don't want to do, we, when I came here as a commissioner, we had a lot of employees, unhappy employees, and we had, we had a lot of turnover. It was taking a long time to hire employees. And I, if they sit here and ask for an employee, I don't even know, I don't even know what to say. If they're, you know, because I don't know their needs, and they know, and we have to, I think we have to put faith in our department heads to do this. And so I, I would like to look at this and change it to where, if there's, if there is no funding for the position, I agree, Barry, that we should look at it. But otherwise, looking at every employee hire, I don't think, I don't think we're qualified to do that.
I don't think some of us are, then.
Well.
I have a, I have a, I have a problem with you saying that it's like your business.
Yeah.
Your business is different. That's your money. Your business is different, that's your money. That's your money you're spending, not, and this, and this is my money we're spending.
Yep, but the problem is.
There's a big difference.
It, it is, but that's not, this isn't our, we're here to make policy. The problem is, this county should be run like a business.
The policy, the policy's changing.
Now, let me talk, here's the deal. If I have a, a really a good employee, it isn't always about money for them, okay? It's, it's about faith from the employer, it's about how they're treated from the employer. This is how you lose good employees, is by not letting them do your job. You stick your fingers in there and micromanage, and you, you don't know what their needs are, there's no way for you to know. This should be run like a business. And if you look at any big business around here, I don't care what it is, whether, whatever it is, the ones that are successful get good employees, they retain those employees, and those employees then make money for the company. Here, we're paying, we're paying good wages now, I want good employees. I want happy employees who do a good job. I don't want to lose our good employees, we were losing them when we were doing this before, we were losing good employees. We've lost good employees, and now we finally came to a place where people are starting to level off here. And now we're going to go and start more trouble, and we're going to sit here and picket these people when we don't even know. And so I hope you guys, I hope we all think about this, because, um, does anybody here believe that they're qualified to decide what those department heads need? Does anybody here think that they know that?
I think, I think one of the things that we talked about is really just understanding the funding that the positions are coming from. And, and as long as the, the funding is still there, because that's one of, one of the issues. And I think, I think there's ways that we can have conversations with department heads, whether it's at committee meetings, or through trusting that, you know, Kerry's going to have those conversations, or whatever it may be. But I, I do think that we need more conversations at the, at committee meetings about budgets, about maybe having more conversations about when employees are, having the conversations at the committee level, about employees leaving, employees going, because, and I, I believe Denise was the one that pointed it out, we don't know that. We don't know what they, what they are already doing, because there, those conversations aren't always happening at committee levels when employees leave and come back. And Human Services is a huge department. So I think, I think if, I think what I would like to see is us having more conversations at committee, the committee level, but maybe not bringing it to the board at this point. If, if there are huge changes at the state and, and federal level with funding, where we really need to hone in on what's the funding source and, and look at those positions, I think we can tackle it at that point. But I think at this point, I think it can be handled at the committee level.
I do too. How do you guys feel about it? Phil, do you feel like you're qualified to decide whether they need an employee or not?
Well, that's kind of putting me on the spot here.
Well, because, okay, I'm going to tell you, I want to make a motion to change this, so that if there, if the funding is changed for a position, it comes to us.
What is, what is definition of change of funding? How about, how about this?
If we lose funding for, for, for something, for one of our employees, if we lose that funding, if it comes from the state or federal, then we look and see about rehiring. But if the funding is the same, if everything's the same, I, I don't know how anybody, any of us, think that we can decide this. And I've watched this before, and I've watched commissioners, now you guys weren't here, but I watched commissioners sit here and decide whether we needed help at human resources or not. And there was a big discussion on hiring somebody to help. And I'm, I, I really wanted to know how those commissioners knew they didn't need any help over there. We later found out that she didn't need any help, because the jobs, the stuff wasn't getting done. We had files all over the county and it was a big mess. And, and it was a big mess for employees, we had a big problem with employees. And I, I think that we're going back down the road to start more problems and to lose more good employees. And so here's what I'm going to do, I want to make a motion to change this. And the only time we, that they need, and, and I agree, Erica, that we should have more discussion, but I don't, I don't think that department heads should have to come and sit here in front of us and be picked over in public about stuff that we don't know about. So I want to make a motion to change what we, to change what we did last time. And I don't know exactly how to say it, but I don't want to look at every, every new hire, I absolutely don't.
Can, can, first of all, can we make a motion?
Yep, yep.
If there's a motion on the table, there's no discussion, point of order.
Yep.
We haven't made a motion.
He said he made a motion, point of order.
We have, we have a motion by Richard to change the process that we approved last meeting.
I think you want to revert back to the old policy.
Yeah, okay, that's what I want.
So, so is that, that'll give it to you, Richard, Richard? Okay, so Richard's made a motion to re, refer back to the old policy that we had currently before we changed it with their motion, or their.
There's a point of order, you can't discuss it.
Yep, yep.
There's no discussion.
Point of order.
We'll, we'll, we'll get a.
There's a motion on the table, you can't discuss it.
When we get a second, then we can discuss.
Okay, well, I haven't gotten done, okay, wait a second here, Barry. No, I, because I'm not sure exactly how to make this motion, and I'm sorry that I'm not as qualified as you, but don't start. Let's start working together here now. I, I, and because my motion did include that if there's.
There's no debate on a motion when there's a motion on the table without a.
Well, it never actually got to be a motion, we were discussing how to make the motion, and then you stuck your finger in it now.
Okay.
We, we want to work together, so let's try and work together and be fair to each other. I wasn't sure what the motion should say, but I did say that if there's a change of funding. Can I please talk, Barry, I came here to try and.
Hold on a second, just, so I would, let's let, Richard, let me, let's see.
I don't know that I actually made the motion, Dave, I don't know that I actually did that, I was discussing making a motion.
Okay.
And so I don't know that I actually made a motion, now we can go back and look at the film here if we want to.
So, so in order for us to do this correctly, would you withdraw your motion, then we'll make a new motion?
That's what I'd like to do.
Okay, so Richard would like to withdraw his motion, now let's.
Mr. Chair, question?
Yes.
Is this on the agenda for a motion action item?
Was it last time, Barry?
Yes, it was.
It was on the agenda that we were going to do this. Have you ever brought up a motion without it being on the agenda?
Not something of significance, and usually you add it to the agenda.
Well.
I do, I do agree with, I do agree with Barry that it really should be on the agenda if we're going to make any policy changes. And it's not.
I don't have a problem getting it on the agenda next time either.
But I think, yeah, I think, I, I agree, Richard.
That is the point.
Let's have more conversation or more thought about this, and I think this is a good discussion to have. I think, I think it's an important discussion to have, we do have important, you know, important jobs of monitoring the budget. But I think let's maybe put it on the agenda for next board meeting.
So is that the feeling of the whole board, is to put this on the agenda for the next, that work for everybody? I think that's the correct process, we don't have a, we don't have it on the agenda currently. So if we get it put on the agenda for our next meeting, then we can, can have more, get, get a motion if we need one, and then discuss after.
And we did, we did confirm the agenda at the beginning.
We did already confirm the agenda, correct, yes.
Well, and Mr. Chair, just the reason why you want it on the agenda, because this, this seems like an ambush on me, on my, on my request at our last meeting. I had it on the agenda, I asked it to be put on the agenda, and we passed it. Now, when you come, without me knowing that you want to change it back, I have no time to prep an argument to say, oh, I think, you know, so it's kind of an ambush on the policy that was just changed to go back. Now, if you put it on the agenda, I have ample time to regard and, and get my thoughts in order. But obviously, it's not appropriate when you, when you don't have it on the agenda to prepare for an argument, but.
And I don't have a problem with that, Barry, I didn't come to ambush you, I didn't talk to, me and Erica did have discussion at the committee about, about what, what do we gain and what do we lose from what we did last time? And so that, it was not here about ambushing you. I've had a lot of thoughts about what we did, and I'm not happy with what we did. And I did not come here today to make a motion, and you know I'm not as qualified as this, at this, as, as you are, and, and I'm going to make mistakes here, but I don't have a problem.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
You know, we're on this discussion, I do want to, and I will argue this on some, here's from Aaron Murphy, DFL St. Paul. Last week, the state's budget and the family budget across the state of Minnesota, they're worried about the loss of billions of dollars in aid used to run schools, health programs, and what we're talking about today, health programs, inspections and more, billions of dollars are changing. So to, to say that we shouldn't be looking at these hires and where the funding is coming from in the future is a mistake. And if you think that a 15 to 20% increase in our tax levy is not possible next, next term, it's possible. We have to start looking at where, where, where are these funds going to be cut? What's happening at the federal government is going to affect us financially tomorrow. And if you don't address it today, we'll be looking at a 15, 20% levy increase? Do you think that's acceptable? I don't, and I think these jobs need to be looked at today. And if you don't look at them today, we are going to be in a world of hurt when it comes to setting our levy. We're, we're talking about the state mandating a 10% levy increase on the African-American child welfare or, or community. So I'm not, I'm not happy with our last year's levy, I thought, I think that's too high. Now, if you, if, if government has unlimited spending, then you listen to every department head and give them everything they want. And that's, that's what you're going to be end up with. So I adamantly oppose not reviewing in this time. Now, when this time settles back down and we can be confident that the federal government's funding is, is stable, then I don't have a problem with going back to budget items. But right now, every, every hire has to be looked at, because we are in, we are going to be looking at huge increase in our levy. And that's, you have to address it today, not, not kick the can down, so.
And, and what I said, Barry, was if we lose funding, we should look at the position. So now you're going to go back, you're going to take positions away from people that still have the funding? You're going to go through every hire? How are you going to know whether they need that person or not? Now we're having this discussion, how do you know if they need it? How do you know?
I, I think, I think both, we know both your sides, we understand and repeating ourselves, so.
Well, I know it, well then don't put it on me, like I want to go ahead and keep hiring people without funding, because I said, if the funding changes, we should look at them. Otherwise, I don't know why or how we could possibly look at each hire and eliminate one on, on feeling, just feelings that we don't need that person anymore.
Mr. Chair, can I just, can I just say one thing? I, just, just one, one thought, and this, this of course is specific to Human Services, is as long as, yes, I agree, Barry, we need to look at the funding, but the services that we are, that Human Services is required to provide hasn't changed. And that's not going to change until, you know, there's, there's possibility of funding change or policy change. And, and so until then, we still have a duty to provide those services in Human Services. And we, we, we can't say that we might lose the funding, so we can't provide those services. So I just want, as we're thinking about that, we all, I want everybody to also think about the services that we as the county are required to provide our citizens, so.
So with that, we know, we got both sides, we're going to have, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we can discuss more. All right, does anybody else have any, or, Erica, do you have any more committee reports?
Nope, that, that was it.
Richard, you can't talk anymore, sorry there, Mr. Frankford.
Mr. Chair, while we're on this topic, just for a point of clarification with the policy modification from last time, I had my department head meeting following that change or modification, and some questions came up. And there are going to be a few positions that are going to come before you with requests to fill. So the questions that really came up, it was really the intent of what the board did the last time. What I understood of what, how you wanted it took flow, and how some of the department heads heard it, it was different. So for these positions that are going to come before you today, I understood that you would be asking the questions or whatever questions you, you felt you needed to ask. And then once the board did approve to fill those positions, then it could be posted. Or if there was a lag in time, if it stayed as is, that they could come before the board, if that's what the wishes of this board are, but it could be simultaneously posted, because what the department heads were concerned about in the meeting was that we would have a lag in getting information out there for posting, et cetera. So I just wanted to clarify that point of what, what you're all, all of your intent was.
Okay. Any, any further committee meetings, any, by any for, I have a couple.
Did we want to clarify for?
I was hoping for an answer, please.
All right, we'll give you that.
So, so I think, you know, what, what we had talked about last meeting was really just making sure we're having the conversation about the funding and where the funding comes. I believe we, the consensus was that they could move forward and post.
That's what I understood, but some of the department heads thought that it had.
Well, I think, I think posting, I think the question was, should it go to part-time? Should the position go to looking at two part-times or continue on a full-time? As you know, two part-times will save the county money, and if it's, if it works out that there's part-time people available and want, it's a less expensive route. So I would say posting, but, but the option of posting it probably both ways would, would save you, save you some time or options, if you want to post a opening for a full-time or possibly part-time position, two part-time positions. And see what, the, the, the posting of it isn't going to affect whether or not it's, you can still say it's which way it's going to go, or if it's not going to go at all, or, so the posting doesn't, it doesn't matter to me if it's posted or not.
Yeah, I do, I do however, think that there are certain positions that part-time just doesn't, doesn't work, especially in, in Human Services, so I don't.
So what I'm hearing is the intention of that, the motion or the policy change we made was to allow the department heads to post a position that was, was a resignation, but right away, but not get a final approval until it comes to the board, is that correct? And then if we don't approve it, then it, the posting is taken off.
You just wouldn't hire.
Wouldn't hire, yes.
Or potentially move it.
Yeah, move it.
And then go through the pool and then indicate that the position is now part-time versus.
Is that, is that the?
Well, I think the posting would have to change to part-time if it's, if once it's approved by the board.
Yes, yes.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't hinder it.
Applicants.
Yeah.
It wouldn't hinder if you, if you kept it full-time, if you kept it as, I, I'm fine with if it's, if we continue this policy, if the position, it can be re-advertised or reposted in the, and as it, as it was, but it may change. I mean, as, as long as we're all right with that, it may change into part-time or, but the board, you can post it as is, and the board, again, most likely will post it as is. But if there's a case where they want to try something else, or see that this is too questionable of a funding, then, then we postpone it for a while. Now, you know, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, because some of these, you know, this, this turmoil that we're feeling at the federal level should taper off, you know, in months, in a few months, anyway. I, I, I believe, but in that meantime, I think we have to be very cautious.
So, so my understanding is then, we will allow positions that are resigned for currently right now, with the current policy we have, we'll allow the department head to list them.
Post as.
Post them as is, and then come back to the next board meeting for our approval, or, or maybe adjusting it or whatever. That's, that's the plan, that's what we currently are going to do right now. So we also had.
I don't know if we had a specific intent, but that's, that's fine.
I think that's why we all heard something different.
So, so then my question would be, does that, should the two committee commissioner members be informed that that is going to happen? Or should the department head emails them or calls them?
I think that's.
That wasn't, that was our intention too, I believe.
Well, and I think, I think your consensus, if I may, Mr. Chair, is that, you know, I think you've all agreed that you probably want to have some more in-depth conversation, you know, at, at the committee level, since we're concerned about funding.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, my elementary understanding of this was that just if it was a new hire in addition to what was already budgeted for, that's what I thought it was.
Oh, no.
No, no.
No, we.
That's what it was previously. Yep.
Okay, I think I have it straight, thank you.
Okay, yes, all right, any other committee reports by anybody? Okay, I have two and I'll make them fast, so we're not here all day. I had transit with Phil, there's just a couple of things I wanted to add. So rider ships from last year are up 13%, so that's cool. The new bus is supposed, the new bus that was ordered before I got here on the board is supposed to be here, is supposed to be delivered the first week in March. That's, that's the original, that's the plan right now. And then also, one more thing in transit, the, the state funding for transit is, is not currently enough for our transit budget. not currently enough for our transit budget. Now, we have ridership fees that have been able to cover that, but what the state does is they, they budget 95% and you're, and then the riderships are expected to cover fi, at, at least 5%. Well, ours ridership coverage is more than that. And if it continues on the way it is without the state making any adjustments, that we might have to look at things we need to do in transit, maybe some of those things where Kevin had some ideas about maybe cutting Saturdays or shortening the hours up in the morning and the evening. Or we could increase the ridership's fee from, for example, maybe from $1.50 to $2. Those are just options right now. He is working with the state to see if they're, are going to have amend the, the current budget. There's a lot of questions, a lot, a lot of, all the transits are having the same questions is what he said, so. So there's a possibility, but we're not there yet to do some of those things, but we could, we could get there. That's what, that's what I'm saying. And then I also had a historical society meeting and the American Adventure exhibit is still up and running, it's in the basement. It'll be there till early May, so anybody interested, it's really, it's actually really cool. I did it once, I died many times of dysentery, so. All right. And then I had a Lakes Country Service Co-op meeting and basically it was just, it was, the main part of the meeting was we have a couple of new board members, so there was a lot of information about how the service co-op runs, how, that we met the, we met A, Anne Kilzer, who is the person that represents all of the service co-ops in the state of Minnesota. She's the executive director of all of them. She kind of manages grants and so forth that go to the individual service co-ops. And so that, it was, it was good information on the process of how things work and it was pretty good. One thing that the service co-op does do that they're really proud of is they, they worked, they work with Morehead, MSUM, it's not Morehead State University anymore, it's Minnesota State University at Morehead. And, but by teaching, like a lot of schools teach concurrent enrollment classes, a concurrent enrollment class is, is a class that you can take at high school that you can get college credit for and you stay in the high school. You don't leave to go somewhere else where they don't lose, so they don't lose the funding. If they go online, they lose the funding. If they go to the tech school, they lose the funding. So Morehead State actually, or Minnesota State, I don't call Morehead State, they actually have agreed to allow the teachers that need these credits because they have to be graduate credits, so they have to be, have a master's degree in order to teach these classes in that field, they've agreed to allow them to do it for half price. And then that kind of, Lakes Country Service Co-op kind of negotiated that. And then there's also some possibility where Lakes Country Service Co-op could teach some of those classes also. And then they'd even be, they'd actually, then they'd be a free service to the, to the cooperative members, so. That's kind of, that was kind of exciting.
Well, most high schools teach college classes.
Yes.
And most of those instructors can even get waivers for their masters, so they don't have to.
They can, they can get a waiver for a while, yeah, especially.
And they can extend those waivers probably.
Mm-hmm. Except for, especially for the smaller schools where they don't have as many options.
I did notice that there's funding cuts in, in the governor's proposal for private schools and schools too.
Yep, there is.
So I hope they look at their budgets.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure they are. Uh, I had one more, oh, never mind, that's it. Anybody else have any committees? All right, let's move on to appointments. Does anybody have any appointments today?
What? I did NRM and.
Oh, do you have any more?
I did NRM and the DL city meeting. We did look at Dunton Locks Park. And I think, I think we should have a, at the end of a board meeting, I think the board should go out there to determine what we're going to do with the old shelter. One of the things we discussed was, now, right now, the STS crew is tearing down the bathroom fix, everything inside and gutting it, so I think, I don't know, Richard, a couple of meetings from now when it warms up a bit, that we should go out there as a board and determine, should we keep this structure as just a structure or should we tear that down too? And I think the concrete there is pretty, is part of it is pretty good, but I don't know what it's like under the whole thing, so we should probably visit that and determine as a board what we should do with that. We also discussed the Pelican watershed, we're going to look at the building, we're going to look at putting a door on, on the other side to utilize that. I think Charlie's, you know, voice on that, you know, resonated quite well. And then we can use that area for parking and we can put a patch of pavement on the south end of that building. We discussed the Heartland Trail.
Mr. Chair, Barry, what, who would be paying for that? Would that be a watershed cost?
Well, we'd, we'd look at, we'd look at the cost, I don't think it'd be that much, but maybe a split on it or, you know, we'd be asking for a split, of course, and seeing what, what works. We would pay for the, the pavement in front of that, but the door would, and Richard said he'd put it up for nothing anyway.
I told, we did talk about it and we talked that maybe we, we could share the cost of the door, it would be a more of a benefit to us than them. Charlie's probably do the door, you know what I mean? But we should, we could help them with the door and we should help them with the door.
We were looking at designating some tax forfeit parcels, the statutory requirements, there's a parcel on one of the lakes that we just, we just got that would be nice, has a, has a log cabin on it. Mary was adamant that she gets to use a log cabin whenever she wants, but there is discussion if that goes in a public swim area and there'd be just what we'd use it for. And there's some maybe primitive camping areas available. It was interesting, the, the tribal was represented by Jessica, Dave, and is it, I can't remember, is it George?
I can't remember.
Anyway, he's, he's filling in for the tipper person and he said they have a couple of primitive campgrounds, one in, I think they're not in Becker County, but they manage them very well. So, I mean, there's an opportunity, if, if we do have a primitive campground, maybe they could, maybe they could manage, you know, help manage it, you know, then we wouldn't have, I mean, it's just, they need a permit, but it's free and they have to check in. So, I mean, it's, it was, I think it's something to consider if we want some primitive camping. They have, they have some, a system set up already that seems to be working.
At least have a conversation about that system and learn from them.
Severson, is it George Severson? Last name is, I know it's Severson.
That's right.
Very, very good. He said, Dave, he said you dunked over him on, in Fayad, so. Severson.
Well, that's, true, that's true.
So, anyway, it was, it was a good meeting and it's, it's nice to have them there to throw some ideas off, so. Woods and Wheels has a grant and aid application, we're signing on that. We're looking at the STS, you know, future of that program is, is in question, so we're always keeping an eye on that. We talked about the truck, purchasing the truck and selling our truck, our old truck, and that will come before us later. Potential land sales, we went over each, each land sale that we're going to put up that's required by law and approved all those and some of our, a couple of them are adjoining property owners only because, and I wanted to make sure that they were attached to their lands, they weren't a lot of records, so you can't come back and ask to build on those because they were under, under an acre out in, and Mary, Mary provided a list, but there's nothing real interesting on there, I don't think. Had a landowner requesting to put a gate on, a picture of the property. So tax forfeit land here, he wants a gate here, but the, it's a road that goes through here, this is a wetland, so it's got a lot of questions. We learned something about tribal, tribal lands also, that there's a trust land adjoining that and the trust, you know, the people that own in that trust, it's a private trust, so it's a.
Is this Wolf Lake Township?
Yeah. But anyway, there's numerous owners in that and technically they can't cross it and we can't cross it without, and, and we're not, but it's, it's adjoining property here, so.
This one.
There's a lot of concerns when you do cross those, there's, could be multiple, multiple owners and then there's a process to go through to get permission to do that and it's quite extensive, so. That was, that was a kind of eye-opening that there's those parcels over that nobody has permission to be on, but. We talked about increasing the Lake Shore cabin interest or there's more interest in it, we, we said that we did not want to increase cabin leases at this time or more areas for cabins. Talked about the seasonal forester and tram operator. And again, these are positions that I think you need to review. I, and I, and I think when your budgets are tight, and, and I think we did that at committee level and, I mean, those are good arguments, so we'll get to those later on. And then there was no new expenses on credit cards that we reviewed, so. Anything else?
His name is Jake Severson.
Jake?
I, I remember that vividly now.
Jake.
Yep.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, yep, yeah.
He said you dunked over Adam Thielen too.
Well, I'm sure he did.
I'm sure.
Does anybody else have any more reports? All right, let's move on to appointments. Does anybody have any appointments? I have one. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Sandy Gunderson to the Becker County Extension Committee from District Two. Some of you may know Sandy's worked in our environmental area for 33 years and now she would like to do some more cool stuff for the county.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so what is that for? That's for the extension? Is it set up by regions or districts or is there a vacancy?
There's, there's a vacancy for the District Two area. I don't know if it's officially has to be District Two, but is recommended. I, I don't know the rules on the extension, so.
I believe the bylaws for Becker County Extension do outline a representative from each.
District, okay.
Each district, yep.
And since I'm in District Two.
There's, with the extension, it's a state, it's a state-required committee. For extension. And the auditor treasurer is required to be on it and then two commissioners are required to be on it and then the individuals are pointed by the commissioners. I don't know the details, but they're represented by each district.
Sandy, could you fill me in on when you get appointed here? Will you fill me in on what you get? I, I don't know anything about that, so I'd like to see the bylaws and just do one so over. Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. All right.
Sandy, we have a meeting Monday. Okay.
Also, if you want more information, are you looking for the bylaws for, for Becker County Extension? Is that what you're, is that, is that what you're wanting from Sandy?
Uh, Mr. Chair, no, I, I, I'm looking for any information, I didn't know this existed.
Yeah, Sandy wouldn't probably be the one you want to ask. I mean, she's just a.
But as they onboard her, they'll give her that information, won't they? I, I mean, that's what I got with the watershed and with the rack and.
Yeah, there's a.
Might not be quite that extensive, but.
Yeah.
Mary might be the better one to ask for the bylaws or.
Or, or Linda.
I was just going to say Linda.
I mean, if you, if you already spoke with Linda over at Becker County Extension, she might be able to help you a little bit more.
And, and just a little, extension, so Extension Committee is the one that recommends to this board what services for 4H and master gardeners are under that umbrella. And it used to be the farm, farming extension agents, but we don't have a farm extension agent anymore, but we run through, any farm questions, go through there and then they have a, the regional people that they can connect you with.
There's also a SNAP, SNAP educator.
SNAP educator.
I don't think.
We have a regional one.
We have one, but yeah, we have a regional.
We share one with other counties, so. Well, it's state funded, it's not county.
Yep.
All right, anything further? Okay, we'll move on to the county administrators' report, so Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item that I just wanted to provide some information on was the Eagle Lake public access that we've talked about more informally. Information, I had gotten information, I received information, use proper English here, I received information that there are three joint owners and that there is a purchase order in process and they have, and you can chime in as well, Commissioner, roughly $190,000 in the purchase. It doesn't appear that there is desire to donate any of that back to the county for, for public use, but their desire is to leave it and allow public access to that. So I'm not sure what the board would like to proceed on, if anything. I guess it's more of a question back to all of you.
So, thank you, Commissioner, or, thank you, Carrie. Mr. Chair, I, I had done some work on this. I went to the Fraser City Council meeting and tried to get some clarification. It's about ready to close, as I understand it, three individuals have, must have an LLC or something set up to purchase it for about $190,000, $200,000 from the city of Fraser. The city of Fraser does not want the property, but they do, they would very much like it to remain public. You know, it's outside the confines of the city limits. It was gifted to them by the fire department, as I understand. So these three individuals bought it, there was some survey information that they had to go through and some lines had to be adjusted, but they want, I think, what we want. The problem is, you know, the funding for it. I, I think we talked in the past, we would like, that, that is the only access on Eagle Lake. So that's kind of where it stands. I thought it was a little bit urgent because this is, this, this is scheduled to take place, the sale, in the next few weeks. The, the city of Fraser, the administrator over there, Steph, said that, you know, this is ready to go, in the next few weeks, this is ready to be done at the recorder's office. So I thought, you know, if we are going to do something, it seems like now is the time to do it, so we don't have, they go through a sale, have additional costs and they're going to want to be reimbursed on their costs if we come in at a later date. So I just thought it was important to talk about it now and do something if we are serious about keeping that public. Not that it can't happen down the road too, but it'll be additional cost. The, the buyers were, they had paid $190,000 for it and then they had some legal costs into it and that's what they said they would like to be reimbursed for.
Well, I think, I think it's something that we need to look into. I don't know that I'm, I'm prepared to, to make a, make a decision right now, especially with all of our looming, like, I think we have to know where the money would come from and what, you know, all, all that. I, I know we had talked also at the rack that there, somebody was going to have conversations with the DNR just to see if there was any interest of the, of the DNR purchasing it or if that has, conversation has already happened by the city, I'm not sure. But I think that, I don't know that we're, we are prepared to say one way or the other in the next two weeks before that purchase would, would take place, but I, I think it's a great thing for us to, to look into funding options and, and see what's there, but I don't know that we will, we will know that before the purchase is finalized.
The next item that I had, that I wanted to report on, as you all know, we had in the past appointed a, a county surveyor and we had used Josh Pfeifer in the past, I believe he was appointed last year. We have not done an appointment for this year. In my consultation with our county attorney, I asked him to review whether or not we would be required to post that position or not because we historically have posted for appointments and he had indicated that we're not required to do so. However, my thoughts were, and I'll certainly take direction from this board, was that, you know, in best practice, of many of our other positions we are advertising for and allowing, you know, anybody that wants the appointment to have the fair opportunity. So that's what I would, that's how I would like to proceed.
I don't think you need our, our, a motion from us to.
I don't, I don't. I just wanted to.
I think it's appropriate, but I think we're.
I just was hoping for some discussion, yes.
I think Josh has done a lot for us and with the, the grant monies that he's received and started putting out, I don't think we'd want to change that. I mean, I think he, I don't think there's a need to because I think we're in the middle of that, but if, it certainly doesn't hurt, but I, I want Josh to know that, I think we, think he's done a great job and thank him for what he's done. I don't know, I don't know, the best survey out there, I wouldn't support right now because we are doing this project with, with him and, so, but I just want to make sure that they know that we really appreciate what, what they've done.
Yes.
They've done a lot for the monuments, starting, starting those section monuments on the grant money, so.
Correct.
It's, it's, it'd be difficult time to have, to ask someone to come in and change that, but.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Josh is, what's his last name and who does he work for?
Pfeifer, he works for Meadowland Surveying. He's, he's the county surveyor.
Okay, got it.
We appointed him. He, he applied and received grant funding from the state, I think it was $300,000 and started doing section corner points and he's got a couple lines done across the county now, and so. And he did, and he comes to some, our committee meetings, he does state that the east to west lines, those section points, that, that those lines are a lot easier to, to find than the north-south lines there, that's going to be a lot more difficult and I don't know actually That's going to be a lot more difficult, and I don't know actually the reasoning for that, but the north-south lines are harder, and I guess, or maybe areas of this county are harder with the.
The east side is.
For us, so. But, I mean, it's fine to see if there's anyone interested, it's up to you, but I think that's your discretion, so.
Okay, thank you.
I could go back just to fill the topic of the Eagle Lake Access. I was kind of under the impression that that was almost a done deal, the purchase, and they wanted to sell it back to the county. I don't know that they want to sell it back in its entirety, or if they had a piece of property, they were going to slice off that and sell to someone else and then ask for the remainder for the, you know, but it didn't sound like they were trying to profit, but they did want to recoup their expenses. So, but I'm not sure exactly where that whole process is.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, yes, that is true. They want it to remain public, the buying group wants it to remain public, and they do want to be reimbursed for what they have into it, that we're.
But were they going to sell a portion of that off? Or if the county buys that, is there a portion of it that we would sell? I mean, that's, those are the questions that need to be answered before we make any decision, so.
Yeah, and I think for my future contact with them, I can certainly clarify that.
And maybe if the county bought it, we would sell a portion of it off. I don't know. I don't know what's reasonable out there, but it is a nice park on a major highway or close.
And it's a park that's widely used by the public.
Correct. Maybe that, and I think that was one of the reasons why we were a little hesitant on the Toad Mountain, is there was, the finances that would have went there might need to go here. Yes.
Mr. Chair, my only point with this was to do it quickly is because there will be a whole nother batch of recording costs and lawyer fees to change it over, so I thought we could save ten grand or whatever that's going to be by us inserting the county into this, these three guys who are trying to buy it, insert us there and save a little, a few dollars, if we do intentionally want to keep that public and we want to commit. Where we find the money, I don't.
Well, there is some money in parks or in NRM. We did, we would be depleting that budget down to zero if we spent, if you were looking at a hundred ninety. We don't have that much, but we do have probably a hundred that we have available. Of course, you got to remember that depletes any funds that we have in there that we use on an annual basis to do things. Hopefully, if we increase timber sales, that revenue can, that revenue can come back in there a little bit, so.
Continuing on.
Yep.
Is that, okay, all right. There is going to be an economic summit, March twenty-sixth, and I do have a flyer that I can certainly share with you, and I was asked to speak on behalf of Becker County, so I will certainly do that. I was looking through, and later you'll hear, for a delegation agreement with regards to the AIS contract that will be spoken to shortly, but as I looked back through records, in 2016, our county did have an agreement in conjunction with that delegation agreement, which outlined probably more so which fees and such could be reimbursed through that grant, and I think it would be a good idea, and I will certainly take a look at that and bring it back before this board. I know that there's been some back-and-forth discussion about costs and, you know, responsibilities and those kinds of things.
And that's another item in the governor's proposal that gets cut significantly.
Fifty percent, yeah.
And just to refresh your memory, the state's budget ends June thirtieth.
Correct.
So to not review our fiscal end year is the calendar year, so we have six months of, I mean, that's within all these, the years don't match, so if they cut funding at the, for their twenty-six, it affects us at the second half of this year.
Correct.
So it affects our budget this year.
And I believe the AIS budget is slated for a fifty percent cut.
Yep.
So, yes, that would be something we would certainly have to take a look at, which leads me into my next topic. I've had some discussions with a few of you with regards to some potential ongoing board work sessions, with looking at the end or how we end it in 2024 with budgeting, and then preparing, as Commissioner Nelson has talked about, for any potential cuts by department, but I thought a good starting point would be the year end from 2024 where we landed, and that was just being finalized by the auditor treasurer. So if that is something that I believe you all would be interested, we could certainly start that, you know, following our next board meeting next week, or, excuse me, next time, not next week. And in conjunction with that, also, there's been some requests, and again, I'm just trying to get the flavor, or the direction from this board, to look at some strategic planning and also some discussion, further discussion about our space needs and space across the county, so it perhaps could all be jointly discussed, but I think probably the starting point would be to discuss where we ended up with the 2024 end of the budget. Is that?
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea. What about anybody, other feelings for any?
I just, that strategic planning, I just think to have an overview and to set a mission for the county, what direction we're heading, I think would be valuable to us so we can dedicate resources, time, money, whatever, to what we think is important, and I think it gives great direction to our department heads, too, about what we're trying to do here. Yeah, so I think it'd be good.
Okay. So the next item I have is on the agenda. It's with regards to the appointed recorders' position. This came to our attention or in HR's attention that there is an existing statute out there with regards to how a salary should be set, and that it was included in your packet. In review of the statute, our county attorney was consulted, as well as a labor attorney, and really what it came down to, and I was asked by the board chair to bring this before you to get a direction. There's two different legal opinions on this statute. Really, as you read it, it doesn't distinguish elected versus appointed recorder, it just basically states that the salary shall be set by the board.
Annually.
Annually, thank you. And the other opinion that we did receive was that it was probably more so not reading it at face value, but really the intent behind it is for elected positions that are in the recorder position. I do know across the state, I'm not aware of other, there may be some, but I think probably doing it similar to how we have been doing it, but I don't certainly think that there would be any concern with the committee, you know, meeting with our recorder and setting the salary.
My recommendation was, would be to set it by resolution to the what it is. I mean, what the, and then we're.
We'd have to negotiate it with her, because I believe that's what statute says, right? Is that, do we have to set it, or do we have to negotiate?
The statute states that we have to set it annually by board resolution. I think it would be a good idea to have the committee meet, we don't have that exact committee, but it could be the elected officials committee, we could amend the name of the committee, or we could just have finance do it, and then our recorder could come in, she could give us information, and then we could make a recommendation to the board, just like we do with that committee. The only reason I say that is also in the statute, it says if it's arbitrary egregious or whatever, I don't know what the terms are, you know, that the words.
Arbitrary egregious, there's a third one, yeah. Apprecious.
Apprecious. So if we just, that would, that would make sure that we went through a process, listened, and then made a decision.
And I think, I think, I don't know, if we need to do that this year, I would, I think if it comes back to us at the same salary setting with all the same benefits, and I think that's, I think we can show that the research has been done, and I, but I do think it needs to be an annual, an annual resolution. I mean, and I think the monies, this year, I think you just keep them the same, and next year you have a process where you address it in the same time as you address the other ones, so. That would be my opinion.
Okay, so.
So, who else?
That's kind of the same, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think what you're saying is to do it this year, to meet.
And you would do that this year, but I would suggest using our base scale.
Okay, okay, okay. So what we, so is there a feeling with the board that we do that suggestion from the finance committee to have that meeting with our recorder?
Do it by resolution.
And then come back and do it by resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll set, so we'll set up, so we'll have Carrie set up a meeting with the finance committee. Is that fair? Okay.
Yeah, well, and the finance committee would be.
Is the elected official, yeah, same people, yeah.
It's the same committee, just so we're clear.
Good.
There is the Becker Bay Auction. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, if you do have items that you'd like to donate, and the dates, Peggy is graciously cheering that, maybe. And she's looking for assistance through the county to assist with that, but that is upcoming, and, yeah, the deadlines and the dates were included in your packet.
I will donate something, I just don't know what yet.
I accept your donation, no matter what it is.
So Peggy, these are food items, I think, since it's the food pantry?
So, this is an auction where we, in the past, John has, like, for instance, John always donated his maple syrup, and then we put them online and people bid on them, and then the money.
Hundred percent of the proceeds goes to.
Goes to the food pantry. We donate the money to the food pantry.
So you can donate gift cards, people have donated whatever, whatever you choose, and then employees bid on it.
Money, you can give them money.
Or you can just give money, yes.
Richard last year donated a free septic service installation. Huh?
No, I gave them a little money, no free.
And commissioners usually give, I mean, I've given gift cards to a fifty-dollar gift card someplace, and then people usually bid on that.
And I've given gift cards for my business.
We take cash, too. We don't discriminate.
Yeah, there's cash donations, and we usually raise, what, about twenty, twenty-two to twenty-five hundred dollars a year, Sandy?
A year.
Okay, that's our goal.
And we've typically made it, right?
And we, but I do want to stress, too, this is all donated. This isn't county funds, this is donated funds from employees, from commissioners, from, and some departments are very generous on some homemade items and pontoon tours and maybe NFL jerseys or, you know, just different things like that, I don't know.
Signed NFL jerseys.
Super Bowl tickets or something like that, whatever, whatever you got laying around sometimes.
Mr. Chair, I had modified the agenda for number five, for the Heartland Trail. I'm not sure if we need further discussion on that. If you had further questions, we kind of talked about it earlier, so.
Yeah.
I skipped soil and water, Peggy's telling me, yes, soil and water, maybe we'll go to that topic.
You know Carl and Brian, don't you?
I know Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm back again for a signature on our delegation of powers agreement with Minnesota DNR. I know we have a new commissioner here for this year. This agreement is something that allows us to hire watercraft inspectors and work at state-owned lake access sites using the county AIS prevention aid funding that was discussed earlier. We've entered into the same agreement every year since 2015, when that funding became available and this program started. It, those watercraft inspectors, that makes up about sixty-five or seventy percent of where that funding goes every year in Becker County. In the past, we were hiring, you know, twenty-five to thirty people with some, you know, pay increases, that's now closer to twenty to twenty-five people in a year. There were twenty-four inspectors last year. They work around ten thousand hours, inspection hours throughout the year at twenty-two sites around the county. We take in contributions from townships and lake associations, those groups that want expanded inspection hours at specific lake access sites. That varies from year to year, but last year that was covered around six hundred and fifty extra inspection hours for the year. A small portion of that funding, around five percent, goes to monitoring for new invasive species in the county, in particular invasive plants in lakes, and for managing those plants. So we make some reimbursement grants available to groups that are doing projects related to, like, curly leaf pond weed treatment. Some lake associations, like Toad Lake Association, will go, you know, raising money on their own and spending quite a bit of money every year for those treatments, so we reimburse some of that work if it takes place right adjacent to the public access site, with the thinking that that could prevent it from spreading to other sites. Another part of that monitoring is having a contractor who works by scuba, using scuba diving equipment at the busiest lake access sites, and those lake access sites that are determined by the state, and different research kind of tells us where to look for these invasive plants. I do a lot of that work just, you know, kind of visually and checking in the summer, but at the sites that we think are the highest risk, a contractor comes through and scuba dives the bottom of the lake looking for these plants, too.
I've seen your scuba diver on Lake Melissa last year, I think.
Okay, so you, that's, so that's one of eleven sites where a scuba diver works. A small amount, two or three thousand, goes to outreach and media projects, maybe you've seen our bar coasters, some media things with groups of other counties around the state, and the other portion of it, twenty to twenty-five percent of it, goes to my expenses, our rent, our shop space that we rent for the decontamination equipment and those expenses. As, you know, Barry mentioned, the governor proposed reducing this funding next year by fifty percent. What I read was that it is proposed to be eliminated completely at the end of FY twenty-nine. I don't, we'll see what happens. The point of that is we'll have some kind of a timeline or window to know what to do when the funding's gone. It won't be like, all of a sudden it's, you know, gone overnight, so that's a discussion to have, I guess, when that time comes.
For this summer, though, it is allocated.
Correct. The payments for twenty-five were certified, the Department of Revenue will receive half of that, roughly three hundred and forty thousand in July, and the second half in the end of December twenty-twenty-five.
So you're secure of the twenty-six funding? Because the.
Correct.
This, okay.
Right, because FY twenty-six is this summer, right?
Starting July one.
July, July one, we would receive the first half, December the second half.
He's proposing on the next biennium, the governor's.
They're cutting AIS on the next, not this current biennium, but the next one.
July one, twenty-six. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's what I've heard from the DNR, yes. It would be fifty percent reduction at twenty-six, twenty-seven biennium.
So for this summer, it's your, you believe the funding is.
And this could, yeah, and that could change, too, for, if, I mean, the percentages or the, so we'll just have to keep our eye on it, and I'm sure you'll adjust hours worked for lake people if that happens, correct?
Right, I mean, it would be a discussion to have with.
If the money's not there, it's not there.
If the money's not there, where, what is our priority moving forward between those categories? Maybe we maintain the monitoring and the prevention or management stuff for a couple years going forward while reducing the inspections or something like that. But we'll find out when they get a budget together, I guess.
So this is for the entire county, right? And the major lakes that you talked about, because, I mean, curly leaf pond weed, I mean, Pelican River watershed, I mean, they have money and they do that, too, but just in the watershed district of Pelican, so, I mean, what you're doing is for the rest of the county, and when you can combine your efforts, I'm sure you do, with what, you're very aware of what the watershed is doing?
Yes, they have applied for those management grants. We have helped them with their, you know, ongoing curly leaf work, like on Big Detroit there by Holiday Inn. So, yeah, they, those reimbursement grants are available to anyone with a permit for the management project.
But there's only so much that you have budgeted for that.
Correct. In the last couple of years, we've been doing two grants at a maximum of four thousand dollars per grant.
Just an FYI, Middle Corman treats curly leaf pond weed by taxing the people, they do a self-tax on their property tax on, on their watershed. Just Middle Corman, just Middle Corman property owners have a tax on their, for curly leaf pond weed that they do treatment.
The Pelican River Watershed District receives one of those four thousand dollar grants from this.
Oh, okay.
To do the curly leaf pond weed management.
And as far as the. And as far as the monitoring, you're very aware of the watershed monitoring too. I mean, they do extensive water monitoring with the city from Floyd Lake all through the watershed. I don't know if it's the same type of monitoring, but-
Well, we're all on the lookout for invasive plants that are, you know, causing problems in other parts of the state. As far as I know, our program is the only group doing the scuba, that level of detail.
And you're looking for plants. I mean, the monitoring is for pH and all other kinds. Okay, all right. Yeah, okay.
The thought process is, is if we can find, if starry stonewort gets in a lake here, if the scuba diving and that testing at our super spreader accesses, that we have, Carl has put together a reserve fund to attack that and try to eliminate that from that lake. Because if, once it gets established, it's going to be impossible to get rid of all of that lake. And our lakes, our chain of lakes for the most part, and it would be a, that is a, that's something that we have, I have nightmares about having, I've had nightmares about starry stonewort in Big Cormorant and it, it's, you run across mats of, you know, it's not grass, it's a legume?
It's like a filamentous algae. So it would look like a plant in the lake, but it's just this big stringy kind of mass. It's not a true plant. It's being called a macroalgae.
Yeah.
But it would look like a big mess of plants in the, in the lake in some cases.
I mean, I don't think probably the people up here in the state of Minnesota have a full understanding of the life cycle of that right now in these, in this environment, but I'm sure they're getting educated because it's, it's moving. It's been, I think it's in Douglas County now.
Yeah, there's kind of a cluster of lakes north of us and around Bemidji and Cass Lake, Winnibiegash has starry stonewort and then a cluster of lakes to the south, Painesville, Lake Coronas, and then kind of that northwest of the metro area and creeping closer into like the northwest metro. But, yeah, in some lakes, it's been a big problem. And like you said, if it's widespread, we don't really have tools to control some of these plants very well. It turns into an expensive, ongoing project just to keep pathways open for boats to get through. So, yeah, but the prevention side of it, looking at the access sites before they spread widely is really the only thing you can do with these invasive plants. And doing a control effort when it was still, you know, kind of localized to one small area in the lake.
So like my biggest concern before was will the funding go through all the way through '25 and it does, so.
It does. We'd have a year window to, you know, get started with next summer, do our, you know, field work of next season and have a conversation about, you know, what folks have for a priority and what we should do going forward.
The delegation agreement that we're looking at today is, was extensively reviewed in 2015 because we were worried about what does this mean? And it really is just a partnership agreement that's worked very well. So I'll make a motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve the delegation agreement. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Our motion carries. Thank you, Carl and Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie?
So the last item I have that I made the addition to the agenda is we did have a resignation of our veteran service officer that came in the very end of last week. And I would like to fill that position, advertise that position and fill that position. I did put before you a cost analysis. If this position were to be hired at step two of the new pay scale, I just took a stab. I have no idea who would apply.
How is this, how is this position paid?
County.
Like, is that all, it's all county dollars?
They do have one small grant, but, yeah.
And we did not have committee on this. Carrie called me and I'm sure she called Dave and we did discuss it pretty, pretty well at length about what are the needs of that office? And I think that office has wanted, I mean, if you remember, we've had two people in that office for a long time. It's, the structure has changed a little bit, so both people in that office have ability to converse with clients about all the-
The claims.
The claims and all the matters. Before it was more of a support staff and one. So now they're both doing kind of the same job. I imagine they have split duties, but the thought process is that there's probably a halftime position needed after that, but I'm not supporting another halftime. But I think having this, now I'm hopeful, hopeful that, you know, at the federal level, there's been discussed at veterans portions too, even at the VA, they've been asking for resignations. And I don't know how you can, you know, how you show that, but hopefully these fundings continue solid. That's anticipation for, well, they're our funding, so it's ours, but hopefully if that happens at state level, we might have more, more questions and comments and concerns. So position that we recommend to move forward with?
So is that a motion?
If there's no more discussion, I certainly will make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the, moving forward with the position of veterans. Obviously we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Barry, second by Erica. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose. Our motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, just, I don't think I said this, but he, Matt did give a 30-day notice, so he will be done mid-March.
Will we move forward with posting that position prior to him leaving, though?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. All right, thank you, Carrie. So let's move on to Human Services, Denise.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Denise.
Morning, Denise.
I have two items for your consideration today. The first is an out-of-state training request with, through public health, for one employee to attend a preparedness summit to be held in San Antonio, Texas, April 29th through May 2nd, for a cost of $4,125. That cost we would pay for, but be reimbursed by the various grants that this employee has paid through.
What grants would that be?
It would be-
I think it's through the Partnership for Health.
Are those-
They're all through Partnership for Health, but there's a federal PHEP, a state FPRH, the state RSG and the state LPH. 80% of that is state and 20% of that is federal, if you'd like that information.
So we had a lot of conversation about this, both at the committee level and at finance. One of my issues is really, you know, we have, I believe the last two years approved an out-of-state travel for, I think it was the WIC coordinator, because she was the chair of this association and one of her requirements as being a chair was she had to attend the national conference. This, this training is not a requirement of the position. You know, I can agree that it would probably be a wealth of information that would help her with her job. I just have a hard time. That's okay. I didn't need to look at it. I just have a hard time spending $4,000 and, while I know it's reimbursed, I just, I don't, I don't know how I feel about it.
It also takes, it also takes weeks of time away from the employee doing county duties. I just find it tough in today's environment that we can't do this training for preparedness summit to, for recovery of aftermath of disasters. I mean, hopefully this never happens, but I just wonder how, how we can't do a over Zoom, get that information? Or I don't even have a problem paying for the registration, get the, get the content. I mean, it's a week, it's two days of 10 hours of travel that we're paying for, for the employee and three days of training, flight, Uber, parking. So this, this one training will cost us over $6,000. And for emergency disaster preparedness, that I feel if we can't, in today's technology, can't do these trainings, I don't, you're not doing networking. I mean, it's not a networking thing in Texas for your, you know, if it was in Minneapolis, I would, I would think it would be a great opportunity for us. But I question, and you can sell it to me if you, if, but just because it's paid for by the federal government or the state government doesn't mean it's the right way to use those funds. Because I think those funds can be used in other ways in our county if we don't use it for this, correct?
It can be used, it's set aside for training because it's a carryover.
For other training.
Correct.
But we had money left over last year. We didn't use it all on that same grant.
There's a significant amount of carryover.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be our goal to spend every penny that we get. The grassroots, we need, I mean, I think that's why we're at our federal government today, is that there's too much waste.
And I think, just want to make note that it's not our Becker County Public Health not spending the money, it's Partnership for Health, correct? Like, it's not, it's not that Public Health's not-
While it's not required, it's highly recommended by Partnership for Health due to the content and, yes, and the dollar value and-
So Partnership for Health, my understanding in the conversations we've had, Partnership for Health wrote this RPG grant, which I think that's the acronyms, but I'm not for sure.
RSG.
RSG. RSG grant. And part of that RSG grant was, the intention was for a public health nurse in the district to attend the national training last year and this year.
Building capacity.
Nobody went last year, so this year they want to send two, one from Wilkin and one from Becker.
That's correct.
So that's, so it's, it's, well, it's not county dollars other than the, the wage.
The wage actually isn't county dollars either because they're, the wage is all paid through those grants also. They're hourly billed, just to clarify.
Thank you. So I still am apprehensive, that's, which is why we, we have, I think it was just, it warranted a full board discussion as far as, because this, this, I believe, if we approve this, we are opening the door for all employees to potentially look at a out-of-state training. And is that, is that something that we as a board are willing to pay for and allow for out-of-state trainings?
Well, I don't know as much about it as I should, but the training that we're talking about isn't offered through the local training, correct?
We did check that, certainly, yes, that the same content was not in the local training.
And if this is her job, then that's her job, right?
Correct.
And we had-
She's the sole public health staff.
Money last time. I don't have a problem sending her. And I understand, Erica, where you're coming from and I would want to see the funding for each out-of-state training. But I would also like to have our people trained. If the training is not offered here and they got it and she's got to go down there to get it, I don't have a problem doing that. If you look at the last hurricane, the federal government failed miserably, those people down there. So for us to have, if we have some kind of emergency here and we have somebody who's trained on it, that, that's important to me because it can, it can affect a lot of people's lives. And so if we've got somebody that doesn't know everything that they could know, I guess, and it's all paid for through these grants, and we did have the grants, we didn't use them all last year, so I guess that's where I'm at. I'd like to see our person trained for emergencies if that's her job and that is her job, so.
Mr. Chair, I guess, I'm not up to speed on this at all. I guess, Erica, I hear what you say, Richard. I hear what you guys say. I guess I'm going to defer to Erica since she's got the most experience in that area, I guess.
I would say I don't have experience in that area. Really, really, my, my conversation has just been in human services and, I mean, I think, I think it probably is a very good training and I think it would be, it would be a great opportunity, as Barry said, if it were in Minneapolis. I just, I struggle with, with the out-of-state travel, that's all. So I don't, I guess that's how I feel. I just don't know that I am willing to, to start, especially in today's budget climate of us opening the door for out-of-state travel. Have, has there, is there any emergency preparedness, like what specifically about this training, and maybe you can't answer this, Denise, I'm sorry, but what specifically about this training is what she can get there that she can't get on any other training?
Let me see if my communication shows that, because I honestly didn't feel, I felt a lot like you when I first got this request. And so I asked a lot of questions and they were answered. And I'm providing you all the information that I have. As far as the content, I think it's just not as specific to public health. Some of the other preparedness, from what I understand, trainings that she would take locally were not specifically for public health. This would be specifically for public health and what we would need to do in an emergency is my understanding.
What questions did you ask that changed your mind then?
I'm not saying I changed my mind. I was bringing it forward because the supervisor and I think the employee feels strongly and so does Partnership for Health, that it was a highly recommended position. So that's why I'm bringing it forward for you all to make the decision. But just because the salary, the full salary, the full training is all paid for through those four different grants. And the money is there through the carryover.
So you're saying you don't have an opinion on it?
I don't have a strong opinion, one way or the other, to be honest, on this particular one.
And Dave, have you had a Partnership for Health?
So I was just going to bring that up. So I, to be honest with you, I, we meet for the Partnership for Health quarterly, so I really don't know a whole lot about this at all. And I probably wouldn't know as a board member on that committee unless I asked. I do have a Partnership for Health meeting Friday. So I could get information on what the Partnership for Health, what the grant is, what it does, why they use it, why they think it's important. I could get all that information when I, at that meeting. I don't know if that would help us or affect our decisions. I don't know, but I could do that.
Well, that brings us to the question of Partnership for Health. I mean, are we going to continue with that relationship with Partnership for Health as we move forward?
We need to supply a one-year notice?
Yeah, and Otter Tail's-
For this whole year, 2025, we would, regardless.
Otter Tail has already provided that.
Correct.
Yes, and so has Wilkin, yes.
So I'm just wondering how that affects everything else. I mean, it's just something to know that there's turmoil in Partnership for Health. And how does that, how do we move through that?
And one thing that we did discuss at our last Partnership for Health meeting was the informing of the board more information on budgetary items, not just showing us a grant and explaining what, you know, what some of these things are for and where they're used at. There's a lot of grants that go through the Partnership for Health, so that, but something like this, it would be nice to be informed on the Partnership for Health, to inform on it, just so I can answer questions for you guys.
I also think this is something that if Partnership for Health feels that strongly, that we should be sending a public health nurse, I think having more information about why and having somebody from public or from Partnership for Health here to advocate for it and answer the questions would make-
It's surprising to me that nobody from Clay County wanted to do it if it's so valuable.
That would be my first question. Why, why did nobody go last year? Or why, you know, I can't ask those until Friday, I guess. So I don't know. Would it be feasible, Denise, if we waited till the next board meeting? Would it still be able to, if it was that too late?
I believe so. We've, so it was originally brought forward to me a while ago to meet the early bird deadline. We've since passed that, but, and, you know, it's not a huge difference by any means and we could, it's not until towards the end of April, so.
So we could bring it back to the first March meeting?
First March board meeting, after I have a meeting.
Yep, that would be great.
I would like to consider the options of leaving that entity also. I mean, Otter Tail, I mean, there's, there's things going on there and I've heard reports too that there are concerns that philosophies might be different for, you know, counties, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, what, I know a Partnership for Health, I think I know what it is, but-
We'd bring it, we'd bring it in-house then to Becker County.
We'd do it ourselves.
Yeah. And that's what, I think that's with Otter Tail and you said Wilkin.
Well, so currently right now, Otter Tail and Wilkin have made a-
It's a one-year.
Yeah, they did it the first of the year, so they'll be done after, at the first of next year. And they are going to partner with each other, Wilkin, Otter Tail. So when this year is up, we would be partnered with, still with Clay County. with Clay County. Now, we are a large enough county where we could go on our own, and Clay could go on their own, or we could, I'm assuming two.
I think it's 30,000, is that?
30,000, yeah. Population. And I believe we also could, I'm, I think Otter Tail and Wilkin would be receptive to us joining them also, if we, if that was a decision we would like to make. Um, when we had talked about it previously, it was recommended by our public health nurse and Denise that we stay and try it, and if it doesn't work the way we want to, after a year, then we make a decision. That was the record, is that correct? Yeah.
Well, we just didn't have enough time.
We didn't have enough time.
And it's strong on us a couple of weeks before the deadline.
Yeah, that was a big part of it, too, was a very short notice.
Yeah, we definitely will be looking at what we're going to do in the future.
I think it's, I think it's best if you, we do decide to leave, that we do it partnership, with partnership with Clay County also. I mean, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't at this time, but I think, I think this full board has to better understand the pros and cons of, of staying with that or leaving.
Yes.
We've left, we've left entities before, so.
Yep. And, and prior to the Partnership for Health being created, we were with Clay County for that, public health. Is that correct? I think that's what I was saying.
Uh, we were with Norman and, um, Menoma, yeah.
Were we?
Oh, right, yep.
Okay.
Multi-county.
And we went on our own, and then we went.
Twenty, seven years ago, 25 years ago or so, yep.
So is that, is that, is that okay with the board, that we bring it back to the next board meeting? When I find out some information, I'll ask a bunch of questions about the grant, and why, what it's for, what, what's the rationale, and, and all those questions?
I, I think a little bit more in-depth of the itinerary. I mean, pathways to, to recovery in aft, in the aftermath of disasters, I mean.
Well, and I think disasters in Texas might look a little different than disasters in.
Yeah.
Well, we all had COVID, and that's kind of what I was thinking about. And that was a big deal, and we didn't know how to handle it, and that, that's what concerns me, things like that.
This is, this says the aftermath, though. It doesn't have the, so, I mean, the itinerary would help support, or, either way, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, and so, I just think.
And, and then I would also like to say, is, is, are those speakers available in any other form? You know, because I really, um, two days, a 10 hours of travel each, it's, it's, it's.
Well, and oftentimes, conferences do offer some online portion.
I mean, there, there are benefits to being in person, even, but those connections won't be ever in again, you know? If you go to the cities, those connections that, that you, that you are continuous, so.
Yep. Okay.
All right, all right. So Denise, your next item.
Next item is a personnel request for a public health full-time RN due to a resignation. This is a budget position for a evidence-based home visitor for the MESH program, which stands for maternal early childhood sustained home visiting. Um, we show a cost analysis at step 10, so this would be the worst possible scenario, um, if we, if we, the rehire was at step 10. Uh, the current year cost is $9,201 over our estimated budget, and the next year is $13,002 over our next budget.
What, what, um, what funding, is this required? Are we required to have this by law, this position? That's, that should be, I mean, we should have a step, is this required by law to have?
No, I don't believe it's required by law, at all.
Are we, are, is the county required to offer maternity visiting?
I don't believe so. I wonder if Amanda's on, she might have a better understanding of that particular. Yep, she is. Amanda, would you mind responding, if you're available? I don't believe this is a statutory requirement by any means. The funding is funded by a number, again, about four different, um, this position is funded by four different grants. Um, and LPH is one, MCH is one, TANF is one, and Strong Foundations, and it's .88 state and .12 federal.
So my question is, if this, does, is this position reimbursed, those grants by bill, by sending, by billable?
Correct.
Hours, billable hours?
Yes.
So would the billable hours, would that exceed the salary of this person?
Um, if it's at step 10, potentially, yep.
If it's at step 10?
We, we always do our cost analysis.
I, I understand that, but that's the highest step, so if, yes, the answer would just be yes, then, right?
Correct.
I mean, at step 10 is the highest, so that would be the highest rate, but, so you'd bill, the billing rate is higher than step 10, is what you're saying?
The billing rate is not at step 10 currently.
So if it's at step 10, we would not be fully reimbursed?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's not what I got out of the first.
Sorry, sorry.
No, I understand.
So it, if, if we hire at a lower step, it's possible that it's fully reimbursed plus income generated.
Yes, yes.
What, I, I, I'm not quite following. You said it's 8.88 state funding and .12 federal funding? Are those grants, so the four grants that you're getting are state and federal grants, correct?
Correct, through the Partnership for Health.
Through Partnership for Health?
Yes.
But TANF must be the federal.
Correct, is one of them. The other is MCH Title V.
And, and I assume the, the state grants, is federal money coming through state? I mean, we're looking at, I mean, if we hire this, I mean, I'm not saying we do or don't, but if we lose that funding, then we, then we lay off. Is that, is that what we're looking? We, because this isn't required by law. If it's not funded, then we, then it's terminate, I mean, then we look at termination. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
That, that, yes, that was the way I look at it.
Yeah, so, you know, this one is not required, and, and I think we've had some great, um, RNs, but I know we've had some poor communications with new mothers back in the day. So you, this position can be a negative, because when I, when we had children, I was not very impressed with the communications and the risk, how we were treated as new parents from the county staff. Um, so you could have good, good people doing it, and I think we've had, have great people, but I think it's important to make sure that that, that relationship needs to be very professional and, um, not condescending, is what we felt. We were being condescended at.
Well, and I think that can happen at any, in any.
Right, but I.
In any position.
But as a position that's not, that's not required, I don't want it to have a negative effect, and I don't think it has recently, but, um, if, if it's at step 10 and we, and we have to put in money to this, I would, I would like us to look at offering it as two part-time positions at, at, under the, under the cap of insurance, so it would save us money. Then we would be sure not be losing money. Um, at least advertise it like that, so you can see if there's interest. If there's no interest, then, then I could support going back to full time.
I think my issue with it, and I've just got to say it, when, when you are doing client work, which is case management work, which is what this is, part-time work is very difficult for you to, to do the work that you need to do, even with a smaller caseload size, because everything changes, and I just don't think part-time work, um, is conducive to, to, to client work, and I don't know, do we have any part-time public health positions currently?
We do not have any part-time in public health at all currently. We do have, uh, part-time in office support, um, a few of them, and in, one in accounting, and they are .7. Those are the only part-time, um, positions that we currently have.
And when we had public health positions, we have previously had public health positions that were part-time, though. Yes, or, I, I can't recall?
You know, I'm not really sure either, um, right offhand about part, about public health. We've had some in other units, definitely, that, that did not work out well. Um, we just, they tended to turn.
What did not work out well?
Other part-time positions in other units, they just tended to turn over constantly, constantly.
That's what we seen before with part-time, and we were actually, we've actually lost some really good employees that would have stayed, had it been full-time. And so I'm, I am not, I, I think, I'm not a big part-time person. I mean, there are certain positions where, where it is, it's okay. But if we want quality employees, and again, we're paying good money for these people, I want, I want good people. And I, I think full-time is, especially on something like this, is, is important, that we get a good person in there to do this job. And when you go part-time, you lose a lot of, of hiring opportunities when you start saying part-time. And you don't get any benefits, and you don't get this.
You don't, you don't know that, though, till you put it out there.
No, we've seen it. I've seen it happen here.
I have seen it in, in our previous job markets. It depends on what the job market is. If you have a, if you have a, I mean, I think the past few years, we've had trouble with part-time, and I think, um, when you have that, you, you tend to go back to more full-time, and I agree with that. Um, in this case, we're going back the other way. There are more, there are people looking for jobs now, and I don't know in the RN if that's going to be the, the same, but I think you, I think you look at, at a, at part-time, at part-time, and whatever, whatever percentage you want, 75, 25, or 50/50, what would work. But I think you start looking at it, but, but again, funding will, if ends, it ends with both of them, so.
And I'm open to looking at part-time positions for certain positions, but I think that when, when you have a case management position, you have a case that could take all 28 hours of your time a month, and you, or a week, and you have cases that, you know, can take, you know, you just, there's no way of, of estimating how you would get all that 28 hours of work done. Like, it, it's, it's very difficult to do, um, case management work in 28 hours, even with a lower caseload, um, just because somebody may be sick this week, and if you have to see them once a month, and you, you know, it's, it's hard to, to make that work. So I, while I'm open to looking at part-time positions, I think the part-time.
I think it gives you more flexibility with, with, and I think you can get more hours in part-time, because you're not paying full benefits.
For us.
Do you know any other counties offering part-time?
No.
Otter Tail?
I haven't checked either, but.
You don't know Otter Tail?
I do not.
Okay, Otter Tail is offering a part-time for an RN, RN right now.
Denise, so it, this person has to be, has to be an RN, or to.
Correct.
Qualify, okay.
Is Otter Tail offering a part-time for this, specifically for this work?
Oh, I do know, actually, you're right. I do know about that particular one, yep.
Yes.
It was a three-day-a-week position.
I think, I think you can at least ask what the interest was for Otter Tail, see if they had a lot of applicants, and if they had a lot of applicants, well, doesn't mean that they'd be our applicants, too, but, um, that's just my opinion.
So, so Barry?
I don't know, I don't know the full, um, information behind why they have the one part-time either. I don't know if we would, I'm saying we need the full-time, and I don't know why we would break it up into part-times, and how that would work, because, like I said, we only have .7 FTE vacant, or positions right now. I'm not sure how.
You could do 2.2, 2.2, 2.5, you could do 1.75 and 1.25, you could do 60/40, whatever, I mean, whatever part-time is, under the, under the requirement for insurance, to save money.
You get what you pay for, Barry. That's, that's, that's life, and that's the way it is. And if you want some, if you want an employee that's going to get in here, a good one, and stay here, um, we've seen it before. When I came here, there was a lot of turnover, turnover, and there was a lot of upset employees. And now we're gonna, we've forgotten about all that trouble, and we're going to go right back down the path and go right through this again. It doesn't make any sense to me.
You know, it depends on who's available and what they're looking for. There are good employees that are part-time.
Anything more than .75, we would not save any money.
I said, that's why 75 would be the max.
.75, we would still need to pay the full, um, insurance package, from what I understand, so we wouldn't.
Whatever you're, well, I just said, whatever's not paying insurance, that's how you save money.
Mr. Chair, uh, just listening to this conversation, um, I understand this, I heard that this was, this position was funded by four grants, which came through the Partnership for Health. So if we eliminate our affiliation with Partnership for Health, does, would that affect this down the road?
We wouldn't be able to eliminate that until, um, we'd be able, we'd have to give our notice on December 31st, and then we wouldn't be done for another year. So.
Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, too.
It really wouldn't affect us.
The funding would just be changed from going to Partnership for Health, to go to wherever we are. It would follow us wherever we.
It follows the county.
Partnership for Health was not a.
It's not the, it's the funding source, but if that funding, if we dissolve that, then that, the money would be split to wherever we, you know.
Wherever.
It still comes, yeah.
Yes.
But.
Partnership for Health just manages.
I think what's, I, I think this is what we keep an eye on down the road, is if these grants.
Yes.
Are eliminated, that this position is eliminated. I mean, whether it's for, when that grant funding runs out. And I think that's, whatever, whatever way we go today, I think that is part of the motion, that if this, when this grant funding, if, if this grant funding is terminated, this position is terminated. And, and I think you got to look at what percentage of this grant funding, if you get, there's four grants, so if two of them are gone, are we going to, are we willing to pay that extra money, then, to continue this the rest of that time? I mean, those are the, those are the question I think you got to answer now. If it's full-time, it's, or part-time, it doesn't, you know, I could argue one, but I'll be fine with whichever way this board goes. I'm just saying that this is an opportunity to look at saving money. But we have to say, if one of these grants goes away, the position goes away. If two of these grants go away, then, you know, what, where is the dollar amount that, then the position ends?
So I will make a motion to approve the public health position full-time, with the understanding that if there is a change in any grants, the position would, we would need to evaluate the full-time status of the position based on grants available and potentially eliminating the position if there are not sufficient grants. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, and a motion by Erica, second by Richard. Do we have any further discussion?
I do want to just say, though, that these discussions will help us prepare, I mean, in, in these times, I mean, it, it is difficult to know where these funding, where we're funding is coming from. And if we don't think about it now, or address it now, we're going to be hit hard, and, and I don't want us to go in and get smacked upside the head without preparing a little bit.
And Barry, I, I appreciate you, you have much more experience than, than the rest of us in these times, so I appreciate your input and, and forcing us to, to think that way.
I agree. I think we need to have these discussions, because it's possible that we might have to make some tough decisions later on, yes. So I think it helps, it's very helpful.
So, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, I think, um, I, as I understand the motion, when we're advertising this position, we're probably going to need to advertise it pending future funding for this position.
The funding is current until when? Do you have an estimate?
Again, I'd need to, um, refer to Amanda on that. I don't know that answer exactly. I know it goes through.
Well, I would say tip, typically, the funding, does the funding renew every year, or is it just a standing funding with those programs?
Every, each year, and this year goes through July, this current approval goes through July of, or, I'm sorry, June of 2026.
Amanda's online.
That's Amanda Paschal, or a different Amanda.
The person I see is Kristi.
Um, I, I think you will have to advertise it with grant, just notifying that it's grant funding.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I think that's the fair way, if you're putting on somebody new.
Is that okay with?
But that's, to be honest, that's with the, how many, how many do we have in that department? I mean, that's.
Uh, I think it's three, if I call right.
Well, I think it's safe to say that if grant funding, if, if there's changes in grants, we're going to be.
Looking at all.
Looking at all.
That's just it. We, we haven't done that in the past at all.
Mm-hmm.
So do we want to put in, this is okay with the two motioners, pending, it was pretty saying, pending renewal of grant funding?
Erica put that in there, didn't she?
Did you put that, you did put it in there, okay. All right, she did. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Um, no more further discussion? Okay, all in favor, significantly, we're seeing aye, aye, pause, same thing, aye, motion carries.
I did have a question for Denise, and we approved it earlier in our, um, but I do question, I should have, I should have polled it, I didn't. I, I have it in my notes, though, the Children's, the Healthy Kids Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement with the state. Is that cost-effective for us to go into?
It doesn't cost us anything.
How much do we get paid?
We don't get paid anything either. It's just a, a agreement to refer.
Which one is it, that we get 16,000? And we service 250 to 300 kids? I'll get to my notes here in just a second.
It was my understanding that that, that joint powers agreement was no money exchanged whatsoever.
I think the only thing was possible gift cards, that we would provide the, the families if.
Total obligation of the state.
And that would be paid for.
By the state.
Will not exceed 16,585. So how do we? So how do we, how do we get reimbursed for this?
Was the sixteen thousand, can you tell me what page that is? I see it. The total obligation will not exceed of the state. So that's for.
Is that for us?
Gift cards, I believe, for their, for that, families for, for participation.
How do we get reimbursed for our time on this?
Uh, there won't be any time. All we do, all we're doing is referring.
It says aiming to recruit two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred kids.
Which is referring the current children on their caseloads.
Are we not, are we not the government unit? It says DH, MDH duties on page one of seven, it goes to page two of seven, that's their duties. And it goes to page, on two-point-two, on page three of seven, government units duties. Is that us?
Yes.
So we meet virtually with MDH to plan and recruit protocol, meet with DM for virtual in-person training, complete subjects training, provide space, communicate with families ahead of time, prepare for non-English participants. That doesn't take us any time?
Yeah, I guess it would, yeah.
So how do we get reimbursed for that time?
Through the various grants that they get paid for, that, that they currently get paid for, those public health staff.
We're, we're not getting, we wouldn't be reimbursed for this specific employee time. It's just, it's one of the duties that falls under their current position. No.
Is not required, no. We have done it in the past, and it was, from what I understand, very successful.
And then we have a liability, and we have auditing with that. Page five of seven, liability is governed by applicable law, so I mean, we are liable to some degree. Number seven, we have state audits for those funds and for those gift cards. I'm just wondering if, is it a program that we, we already approved it, but.
Yeah.
I, I question if we don't get reimbursed for anything, why we would do this. It doesn't sound like a program that's, it's, it's a testing program for the kids' urine to see if the drinking water is good. I, I, if, if, why are we, why are we doing this for the state for nothing if we're doing it? That's, that's my question.
Well, I think it's an important thing to consider for healthy families.
I think that's part of public health role is to increase health and healthy children and families. It's like a community service type thing along with.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. I just, I just, we, it, it's, it's like in highway when we want all the lights everywhere. I mean, there is only so much government should do, and, and I don't, I'm at a point where we need to review what, what government's role is in everything. And I, I, if I would have, I wouldn't have supported it if I would have pulled it, but I didn't, and it's done. Unless anyone wants to discuss it, we'll just move on, so. But that's my thought on it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
Can we take a break?
Uh, do you want to do Todd real quick first and then take a break? Or do you, can you wait?
I can wait.
Okay.
I think.
All right, Todd.
Good morning.
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 Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have one item right now, which is a personnel request for a full-time dispatch position due to a vacancy.
Uh, Mr. Chair, again, you and I were conversed on this. This is a, this person, the vacancy was someone just going through training, actually, and didn't finish the training, and dispatch is a much-needed, and, and there's still, there's still another vacancy within that department. So I think Todd's request is reasonable. This is county, all county money that does this. And there's no state or federal grants that pay for the wages at, at the sheriff's office.
That's correct.
I, I do want to, I do want, you know, maybe touch base with you, and I know we've looked at this in the past, but regional, regional dispatching, and I, and I'm wondering if you've reached out to other smaller counties around us to see if they would like to use us as a regional facility instead of their own dispatch. I think we probably have the capacity, I mean, we would have to add staff, but it's, in my opinion, at dispatch, it's better to have, and I think this is why we have two people on staff at all times. You know, in the past, we've had one overnight, and that gets real, real critical to have one person overnight. Do you still have any one ti, any time when there's one staff?
When we're full staff, no. And I, I did bring Joan with, just to answer some additional questions when it comes to scheduling.
Okay.
But, no, we, obviously with the vacancies, we've had single dispatching.
But those smaller, I mean, those smaller counties, if they have one person overnight, it, I mean, that, you get an emergency. You want to talk about pulling your hair out. Look at Todd. I mean, I mean, it is.
He's picking on the ballgame.
It is, it is some, I mean, I support this position. I would like us to look at, or kind of put out the feelers if there's another small county that wants to share that. Because, you know, dispatch can, can go across county lines, and Fargo-Moore had to do a joint dispatch center. There are issues with state lines there that we wouldn't have, but I think there are some issues. But I think it's something that we should continually to look at, to join, ask other entities to, to join us. And Phil, if you don't know, the City of Detroit Lakes dispatches their own police from eight, eight-five?
Eight AM to four PM.
Four PM?
But not through nine-one-one?
Not nine-one-one, but just dispatch, which is kind of a naughtily, yeah. But there's someone in the office all the time, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve the personnel request from Sheriff's Department? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, paused, aye, motion carries.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to commend our dispatch staff and Joan, of course. I know Joan has been putting in a lot of extra hours, along with other staff members, to keep everything going smoothly. And they're as smooth as it can, obviously. But again, thanks to her, we, we would be struggling, but we're managing. We'll say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's take a five-minute break. So back here. So let's go right down to Steve and Mitch.
Mr. Chair, I had modified the agenda for the Heartland Trail. We kind of got off topic a little bit.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
I didn't have, and then I was approached by Steve on the break here, that he does have some updates on the Heartland Trail.
Okay.
Of some funding and Partnership for Health leftover funds. So I just wanted to alert you.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie. Thanks, Carrie.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning, Steve.
Board members. We've got three items before us, and the first, really, the first two are really related. Resolution oh-two-twenty-five-two E is a personnel request for three seasonal workers to work in parks and rec. We want for Dunlop's. One is just somebody to maintain the accesses in the parks. And then the other one is a forester, somebody that does forest inventory for us. And for that person, that if we get an intern to do the forest inventory, we need a vehicle. Last year, we didn't have one for him. That's where we would like to purchase that SDS truck and use, so that person could use that.
You know, after, you know. Looking at the full agenda and seeing Jim's request for three seasonals and our requests, is there any sharing of it, an individual, not the forester probably, because the forester has those duties, but the other part-time, I know Jim has three, and, and your request is one. Jim, I was reading in yours that if, if we don't hire the, you know, well, I, I just thinking about if we had two and then shared one. Is there, I'm just wondering the capacity of, it stated in your, in your presentation that other people would fulfill the duties, you know, higher paying, but is, are they at capacity of their duties, the other entity? So would there be a job sharing of one person? Would that, was that something that's been thought of, or of, of one of the seasonal part-times? Because I know in the past, you haven't even been able to complete all three seasonal part-times. So I'm, I'm just curious if we could, and maybe, maybe that's for Jim's discussion more so, but if, if one of your positions could be a multi-position, if we, even if you can't, or if we could, you know, share that person over back and forth a little bit? I don't know. What are your, any thoughts on that?
Well, two of our positions geared more towards maintenance, we could use those, we could probably use those for the full sixty-seven days because of the flagging operations during seal coat or shouldering, other maintenance.
I was thinking that to, to, you know, give you the two, but the third one, is there possibly that third one could be shared with their third one? And, and I'm just, if, if, what the capacity would be.
And then the third one is more geared towards our engineering, or during our construction. We have a lot of duties out on the road of, you know, taking tickets, measuring quantities and stuff like that. This year, we do have, you know, a number of projects going on simultaneously. So we'll probably only have one inspector at each job, you know, we'll have work out on seven, doing the grading, and then all the paving work going on.
They're going on simultaneously, simul?
Well, it is just one contractor. It depends upon them. I mean, there's some smaller chunks, you know, helping the townships out and stuff like that.
Are they responsible for their, someone on site?
The township?
Yeah.
Uh, we have an agreement. We, we bill them, you know, for our time in materials.
So there's billing, so there's recouping some of those expenses for those?
Yeah, for the township work, yes, yeah.
You know, coming from the township, or, Mr. Chair, coming from the township, the county bends over backwards to help townships, not only ours, a lot of them. And, and it's very helpful, useful shoulder to lean on, and hey, are we doing this right, kind of thing? And I would hate to see that, that, that go away. There, all of them, Jonah, Brian, Jim, on a moment's notice, help out the townships, which I think only benefits all of this, but.
No, but it's nice to hear that there's some reimbursement for some of these employee too, that, that. I know they bend over backwards, because if you look at that job, those two, that job is us over here and then two townships over. It's like, ooh, that was this, some distance on that, so. So you're saying that there's probably not a lot of availability for hours to share back and forth?
Well, I guess I, I'm not familiar with what Mitch is looking for, for his forester work or whatever, or if he has extra time, you know. And hours too, generally we're on the same, you know, we're working four-tens in the summer. I don't know, Mitch, I think you might be doing the same, but it.
Generally speaking, four-tens, it's just that recreation position now taking on, well, we've always taken on the state on access. Trying to get from place to place, and if they're running, they do something on the highway, I don't know how that would work or look. But they got a set schedule, I see that, where they've got to get these forty-two axes within the week or the next week. Just trying to spread them out, I don't know how that would work, but specifically to that parks and rec intern that maintains public access is parks.
And, and so we're remembering that parks and rec, we just started getting funding from the state in the amount of, was it sixteen or nineteen thousand? To, to maintain their parks and rec, because we've been doing it, and we haven't been being, getting paid. And I happened to chastise Teresa Umbridge, who is the regional, and she said, well, put a bill, and we did, and now we're getting paid. So that pays for one of those full-time positions then, to, to do that. I mean, one of those, one of those positions fully.
One of the seasonal.
Yeah, one of the seasonals fully to, to do that. So that's why, that's one of the reasons I would support that. But I just, it's just nice to, to understand these even part-time positions better, so that, understand there's not a lot of synergies in those two relationships. So, thank you, Jim, for that.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions on part-time positions?
No, I think, I think the three are. I think, I think the three are warranted then.
Yeah, so I, I'd like to entertain a motion then for two E.
What page are we on?
We're on page fifty, sixty-seven. All right, so we have a, we have a motion by Eric to approve, a second by Phil.
To approve two E.
Two E, yes, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, all right, motion carries.
We have to go back to the.
To the letter A, yes, the STS truck.
And Mr. Chair, this purchase is an intergovernmental, I mean, from the highway department, and we're not looking at selling our other pickup, is that correct? At this time? So, if it, if we do sell that other pickup, then we will be coming back to, for disposal, so I'll make a motion to approve the, the purchase request for the STS, or for the former STS truck.
Most of my buried, you have a second.
Eighty, was it eighty-five hundred?
Eighty-four hundred, or eighty-five hundred, yeah, second by Richard, any further discussion?
Uh, yes, so our, our, this was within, it's an intergovernmental change here, but our fleet of vehicles, I mean, we've got vehicles out back here too, right? That the county has? Are, are those dedicated to certain people or during the summer we need?
Dedicated to certain markets.
Is there any way to do what you were trying to do with managing up NRM with the highway to use some of these vehicles back here to maybe reduce cost or something?
So some of these vehicles are dedicated to certain people, especially in the summertime, you know, for the assessor's office, because they're out inspecting all the time, so some are dedicated. Human services has some dedicated, but they're encouraged, if, if they're traveling and they don't take a county car, like, then there's a reduced rate for employees. So if the car is available and it's not taken to a, a, whatever, you know, for. Going to the meeting in Fargo, then they take a lesser rate.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, so Commissioner Nelson, you're, you, so we're trying to encourage people to use their own vehicles?
No.
No other way around.
They're able to.
You said it's a lower rate.
They're able to, for their own personal.
If they take their own car, they don't get the full IRS rate for tax, to reimburse their mileage.
It's like sixty percent, eighty percent?
Eighty percent.
And some supervisors don't allow it, I mean, there are some that don't allow it, I, I believe that, but managing the fleet is, you know, um, it's a good discussion for another time, because we've entertained.
Yeah.
If you're familiar with Enterprise, they will come in and manage your fleet, I don't, you know, everyone has their own opinion, I think we have better. I think it costs money to hire someone to do that, to manage your fleet, and I don't, I don't like them managing our fleet, but we certainly probably could oversee our fleet better than what we've been doing. Because sometimes you see a car not move for a long time.
Excuse me, Commissioner Hanson, in, in response to your question, part of the reason we're looking for this truck too is it has higher clearance. This person is driving down primitive forest trails where normally you don't take a car, that's part of the reason why we'd like.
I think his, his question though is, if highway's got an extra truck out there, why would you have a spare, just, I mean, but Jim, you might be able to address the usage of highway, highway pickups. The problem with it, it's usually the busiest time of the year in the summer when everyone goes there, everyone's out in the field for highway and NRM, everyone's out where they working out outside.
Mr. Chair, probably a bigger conversation for a different time.
Yep, so we have a motion and a second for, to purchase the STS truck, all in favor of purchasing the STS truck signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, all right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Steve, yep.
The, the third request is a purchase capital, a capital purchase request that I brought back. Previously, the board had approved spending up to, I think it was twenty-five thousand to buy a bucket for our payloader, and there was some confusion on what bucket we were getting, so I got that clarified with a salesperson. And a recommendation after looking at it was to spend some, purchase a little more expensive bucket, it's twenty-eight thousand, but it's a. When looking at it, the, the difference is that it's a lighter bucket, which is easier on the pins and stuff when you're on the loader itself, but it's made out of harder steel, so it should last longer.
Yeah, it's AR steel, and it is like, it's not only easier on the loader, but you can carry a lot more with it. And it's going to last a lot longer, there's a big difference between AR steel and regular steel.
I will move to approve the capital purchase of the grapple bucket.
I'll second.
For, Mr. Chair, for twenty-eight eight.
For, yeah, for, I'd say for twenty-eight eight five zero.
Duly amended.
All right, uh, any further, we have motion, a second, any further discussion?
Do we, do we need to have anything in the motion that this, this, because we already approved the twenty-five thousand, so just. Making it clear that we're approving this in lieu of the one we approved last time, so it's not both, we're not approving this one and.
I'll amend it to say that, yes.
Is that good with you too, Richard?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, all right, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, can I just, just an observation before we move to highway? You know, I, I sit on the rack committee, Barry sits on NRM, it seems like there's a lot of duplication there. Steve is environmental, but oversees forestry, is, is, is that another topic of conversation? Is that the right organizational structure, I guess, for that?
I, I think.
I'd like to hear you guys'.
I think Mitch's voice is, his concern is that he doesn't have time to go to rack meetings, or I'm, I'm putting words in his mouth, but I think he would love to not be, not have to go to rack meetings. Because he is, it's taking time away from him, I think the rack committee, I think, I, I've, I've, for quite a while. Said the rack committee could be dissolved and it wouldn't.
Well, we brought it back to life two years ago.
It's much more active now, so.
Yeah, after COVID, it kind of went defunct, um, but I, my, being on the rack committee for a couple of years, I always thought. We didn't have a lot of pull, we had to jump through a bunch of levels to get something done, I always asked, do we have a funding source and the forestry, could, could we do it? Can we get some funding to do what we need to do from there, approved by this board, but it seems like there's a lot of levels of bureaucracy.
The original purpose of the rack committee was for, when we had a lot of people wanting to make trails everywhere. It was for trail, and Mary probably can correct me, or if I'm wrong, but it was for making new trails for ATVs, UTVs, maybe horseback, there was a lot of. And the big thing was the ATVs, we had a state grant that came in that, that was a big turmoil, and, and we ended up not accepting a state grant for a four-wheel ATV trail. Because there was so much opposition, we decided that if you want to put a new trail, you have to vet it at the rack committee, Recreation Advisory Committee, and then it comes for us for recommendations, that was the original. And what it's evolved to is, is supporting different things and. I think the, the people that are on it are, I think are doing a good job now, I think there, there's a lot of interest in it. But I would agree, it's a, it's another, another hoop to jump through if you're an individual, in the past, they'd just come to our NRM committee and propose something and we'd.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, it seems to me that, you know, we've just got it going again, and it's up to speed fully, we've got everybody from every district now, so I, I'd hate to dissolve it. But I think seeing what their mission is and how things get done, because I always felt we can't do anything without someone else's permission. Which is okay, if we have the funding to do it, but it just felt like a lot of work where someone else is going to make the decision how to move forward, maybe that's a conversation for another day where we just try to.
But it, it really hurt too, when they recommended to go with Toad Mountain, and then we didn't, I mean, so they put a lot of work into that.
I.
Recommendation, well, they went out on site and reviewed it.
Well, Steve did a ton of work on that, but that was directed by this board to go out and do a lot of work.
Right, but rack committee, it went through rack to review it also, and they were excited about what the opportunities were, and then it, I mean, so to your point, yes. I don't know if we give.
Maybe a different conversation for a different day, I.
It's just, you just have to start, I mean, these conversations get you better understanding and how, how we can move forward. You can't do anything today, but you start thinking about what, what's best, and I think the committee, like you said, is doing a very good job and very, and, and I've talked to my rep, and he, he enjoys it, and I think there's good of it. So, I, I just don't know what the role, how, how you get their role, so.
Well, any other, all right, Steve, yeah, Steve, go ahead.
I was talking about the rack, so I contacted Partnership for Health, and they had had some extra funding that they could use. To help provide funding to look at. A, a public trail bike path going between Dunlocks, down to Shoreham and that area, so they had fifteen thousand dollars available that they'd want to know by the end of February if we could, if we're interested in getting that. They're, they're looking for local funds to also leverage that. We didn't really know what we could do with it until we found out what the, if you could use excess funds from the Heartland Trail. For other sta, trail study purposes, which you had that meeting on Friday, Thursday, you want to join us, Jim?
Yeah.
And.
Jim's playing, Mr. Chair.
So now we found out that, that those, that extra funds can't be used to do trail studies going across the county or, or portions of this. Question is, is do we want to continue pursuing the fifteen thousand dollars to do a shorter segment? Because they, they want to know by the end of February if we're interested in doing that to secure those funds, and is the county willing to put some money towards that? And I'd previously talked to Lakeview Township, they were interested in putting some dollars towards that, as would Cormorant, and I haven't talked to Lake Unit, so. I guess it's like, be interested in knowing what your thoughts are as far as continuing to pursue that fifteen thousand dollar grant opportunity. To do a trail study going from Dunlocks, and going as far as we can down towards Shoreham or Bucks Mills or somewhere else to.
I think, I think if you have the, you know, in this case, the funds available to do that study, because I tell you what, this is our population hub, and if you can get recreation in your population hub, it, it serves a whole lot more people than. You get out, you know, in the far outreaches of the county, so I don't, I, are you looking for a recommendation or a, just?
So you're, Steve, you're asking, you're, you're saying that fifteen thousand isn't going to cover what you originally wanted to do?
So the original engineering cost estimate from Apex to do a trail study going from Dunlocks. Down to Shoreham was about twenty thousand, that would prep you to go to get the specs that you need to look for bonding, you know, to do the engineering and you'd eat all those numbers. What, if, if we leverage that and the county puts some money, because they strongly recommended looking for other funds to leverage that, to get that fifteen thousand? If the county puts some dollars and the township puts some dollars in, maybe we could get a little further down from Detroit Lakes or, or Dunlocks, down maybe to Bucks Mills or go as far as we can. I guess, do you have any thoughts, Jim?
Yeah, um, we had done some preliminary work with the Heartland Trail Committee, myself and Hank and Cleone, and we've had discussions. DNR's master plan for the Heartland Trail right now pegs the Heartland Trail pretty much following the Highway Ten corridor. All the way to Moorhead, there are some large obstacles getting through the Audubon area and that, and. You know, with wetlands and things like that, we had some different options that we looked at, but they're not feasible. We had, at the Heartland Trail Committee discussed, you know, options, well, let's put the trail maybe more so in the, where the populations are going down. Would it be feasible to go down into the Shoreham area and through the lakes there, and even going through there, you know that road is, that's a highway preservation road, it's narrower than roads, and there really isn't anywhere to peg a trail. Through that area, so we thought, you know, if we go through, still go through either the WeFest grounds and stuff and head south down seventeen, you know, with the Bucks Mill being developed, you know, maybe that's a better destination spot. Seventeen has some right-of-way, the township roads down there has a right-of-way. And then it was thought we could just bring it down to County Twenty, which is Hoshair Road to Thotter Tail, and bring it straight east or straight west down to where, you know, Pelican and Zorbas is, they have a trail system, you know, going further on. But then we bring it up into the Cormorant area, then back up into Lake Park. All this is outside the realm of, you know, where the DNR is, and they, they would have to amend their master plan study, but if we kind of took, led the charge on this. You know, get this started, and then this work would be kind of preliminary work for the DNR to amend their, their master plan and, and go from there, so. That's why we want to take this in chunks, and then if we could have used some of the funding that was in the Heartland Trail, you know, that would be a big chunk, we could probably get it right to the county line. Because Clay County just finished, or are finishing up, they're bringing the trail right to our county line up there, and it's going to end where our county road one oh two is, that goes west out of.
Are we going to try to match up with them or are we not going to be down here?
Yeah, we would match right up there, and that's a, that's a really kind of a nice little, you know, gravel county road to put it along, and, and it's outside the railroad right of way, so there shouldn't be a lot of obstacles there, but.
It's a real quiet area up there.
Yeah, also, we had some discussion, you know, we talked about the bonds that are already dedicated for construction down there. The twenty-twenty bonds, we, we have leftover, we're going to have leftover money there, we can't use that, but we have twenty-twenty-three bonds for that five hundred and fifty. One thing, that also is dedicated for construction of the Heartland Trail, because we didn't think we'd have enough, but that is still eligible until twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, one thing that we could do is we could ask to have that bond language amended. And include preliminary environmental work, design and stuff like that, so then we could grab that five hundred and fifty thousand and use it for the rest of the. Otherwise, it's going to go away, you know, unless we have five hundred and fifty thousand to spend on construction, you know, we talked about like going to Wantagen and stuff like that. But that will, needs engineering work too, or anything new needs engineering work, so that might be something we should probably go after as amending the bond language.
Jim, where do you think the money would be best spent if we can go after it?
To amend it, you mean?
Yeah, to amend it, where, where would it be best spent and most applicable?
Yeah, we would amend it to, I would say to use, just make it wide open in Becker County, either to the east or to the west, use it for environmental preliminary design and engineering work. And that would, wherever is the easiest path to expand it, we'd follow that then.
Would that money then count towards the fifteen thousand grant, helping get it? Or would you, or would it help?
Two separate things.
Yeah, they are two separate things, but that, you, you know, that would.
Fifteen thousand, if we use that and we leverage that with some county and township dollars, that could get us started.
We, we couldn't leverage it with that, that.
Well, yeah, this wouldn't be done until summer.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we could continue then.
It would continue, so that could be part of the.
This would take legislative.
Yes.
effort, so this is two separate things.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know.
Well, working with this on the rack committee and township and all that, I mean, there is, the, the people at WeFest are doing some buildings up there, and, and they were very receptive to. A trail going through there to get down to wherever it goes down to the Shoreham area, I don't know, County Seventeen or whatever, there were some issues with some elevation things, but they were receptive to listening to something. And that would be the engineering study or the feasibility study, right?
Yeah, I think that's important, I mean, to get that done, because then you got to ask WeFest yes or no, will it be, will you allow the trail there, otherwise then we have to push it out to fifty-nine and. Which could be done, you know, on the fifty-nine right of way, I think that's an option.
But just moving out and knowing the, the pavilion to Legion is going to be done, and I see how that trail's used all the time, the bike trail for baby strollers, people, everything. And then that continues out to Dunlocks to continue that down to the golf course, which is city-owned, I think the city would even be receptive financially or, or whatever to, to seeing that complete. I would be a big proponent of seeing that done from Dunlocks down to.
So.
Shoreham or whatever, and then on to Cormorant.
If we move, I mean, if it, if we, if WeFest wants it or is allowing this, they're certainly going to be closed during WeFest though, wouldn't it? I mean, so we'd have to have an alternate route for that time.
Yes, we did discuss that probability, they had mentioned that, and I don't know where we left it, Steve, but, because of public, if it is a public, you're right, if it is a public trail, it's got to be public all the time, you can't shut it off for three days.
But I think, I think there's avenues to shut it off if we have an alternate route, I mean, I, I think.
More money.
Well, you, you can build the alternate route, but if you can get a trail that, I mean, I, I don't think we can go through WeFest without having an alternate route during those days that it's, that they're using it. I mean, and just a reminder, unfortunately, WeFest has a permit to do up to five events in that bowl annually, and they've had up to three a year, so I mean, just, I mean, you could be talking.
More than just those three days.
Right, so I mean, you have, I don't think you could plan on going through WeFest. I mean, as a, I mean, I'd like to use it at any time you can, but I think you're going to have to plan on an alternate route out around it, in my opinion, we can't. I mean, I, as a person thinking as a business owner, I would never allow that to be open during the sea, during my festivals, I mean. We can't, I mean, I, as a person thinking as a business owner, I would never allow that to be open during the sea, during my festivals, I mean, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, yeah, I would like to figure that out. I'd like them to say definitely no before we say we can't go through there, and they have been receptive. They wanted to know what it would look like, and we haven't done that, thus the need for the engineering.
Yeah.
Feasibility study, where it would go, they need, they want all those questions answered, and I would too.
Yep.
And, and, and when I was on the RAC committee, they did say no, that it would be closed during WeFest. They were adamant of that, and I don't, public funding would not be allowed to use that if it's closed. So maybe an alternate route is better, I don't know.
So really, we've got three questions. One is, do we want to continue pursuing that funding for Partnership for Health for 15,000? And if we do. Is the county willing to put some money towards that from our Parks Rec Fund to leverage that?
Well, I don't know why they, I mean, we're doing in-kind, and I think Partnership for Health, it's their grant, and they can amend their grant how they want, they certainly don't need, I mean, we're gonna be spending a lot of money on it. I don't know why they need it for this, I'd ask them just to give us the grant.
So if, if.
Dave?
Yeah, I, I'm okay with that, I don't know if they'll give it to us, but.
Well.
They will, I mean, I can ask that question too.
Can you ask, can you say, we're improving this, this area and improving the grant, the, the trail already in Dunlocks, and we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, can you give us 15 to, to look at what, where we can connect to?
Yeah.
I mean, can you, can you use the money that we're spending on the trail already in that area?
No, this is for a feasibility study to go from Dunlocks down to Shoreham, but that's what the original question was to them.
Right, but it, we've done, we've already put a lot of money in, in studying, say, we, the archaeological study, the, the, the change of our trail already, I mean, we've done a lot of money's worth already. I mean, and I think you're talking at a small dollar amount, I'm fine with that, and, and Kerry has authority to do that, I think, if, if we need to. Because you're talking a couple thousand dollars if, if the two townships contribute 1,500 or something, and so. I think that's, I leave that up to Kerry, but I would ask them just to not require a match on it. So that's kinda silly for that low-dollar amount.
And then the third request is, is this something you want us to look at pursuing, changing that bonding language?
I would think that would be ideal.
Is that for the 2020 bonding or the 2023?
2023.
The 500 and whatever.
The 2020 one is already closed, so you can't change it.
Mr. Chair, is this, would this be appropriate when we go down to the legislative conference next week?
To ask.
Yeah, I think we, I think we blasted to our legislators now beforehand.
Yeah, and then pursue it when we're on the person, is what I'm thinking, timeline, quick turnaround is what I'm thinking.
Okay, so the answer is yes, okay.
Yes.
Sounds good.
And we're going down, I don't know, who's going down on the 24, on the, what?
On Tuesday, 25.
MRC is the night of the 24th, I believe, right?
25th, isn't it?
So who's going down, and we can hit the lobbyists down, or hit our.
25th is Tuesday.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going down the 25th, 26th, coming back 27th.
Yep.
I'm going down the MRC meeting, I got one, I only got one night lodging, because I got late. I'm not staying seven miles away, so there should be a room the second night for me when I get there, but.
Maybe you guys can share a room?
I'm, I'm past that, sorry.
Go ahead, any questions?
All right, Jim, you're, they're already there, so you're up.
Richard's really on a share room one.
If I could stay with you there.
Bunk beds.
Bunk beds. All right, go ahead, Jim.
All right, first request item from highway is a contract bid award. This is for our paving projects, a number of roads, 26, 34, 35, and a couple township roads. The open bids last Thursday, a low bid is Zaveral and Sons. They came in almost 12% under our engineer's estimate at $4,499,982.48. They have worked for us before, a couple of years ago on the, on the project up on 21, up towards White Earth. We're recommending award to them.
It was very competitive. I do have a question, so on the first one, because 21 to 29 on our, is that continuous, the whole stretch of that road?
No, it's split in two segments.
Okay, does, was that, was that clearly identified?
Yeah.
Because on the, you know, on our five-year plan, it's split, it's not continuous from 21 to 29.
No, no, no.
Just wanna make sure that doesn't cause us a hiccup in the bidding process. It was well-defined in the bid, right?
Correct.
To where that ends, okay.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the contract bidder award to Zaveral.
Resolution 2C.
Resolution 2C.
Okay.
Do, do we have a second for, all right, motion by Phil, second by Richard, do we have any further discussion?
I, I just had a question, the two township add-ons, I, I fully support we, we add-on townships when they need it. But this one, the distance between them seem to be quite extensive, is that something normal?
We like to bundle them together, but it's still, it saved the townships a lot of money. They got the same bituminous prices that we did. This one, it's probably likely that the plant might be set up in Ernie Anderson's again, which is not too far. It's kinda right in the middle of all the projects, so.
So you don't think it hurt our bid?
No, no.
That was my question, with them being so far away from our cluster, I was like, does that hurt our bid when, if they're, but if they're setting up down here, it doesn't hurt us at all.
Correct, yeah.
All right, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, I've went through this whole scenario, and we, townships look at where, where your five-year road project is and say, hey, we could do that road too, and jump on. Because we do 200, $400,000 bids on ours, you guys are doing four or five million. I mean, that makes a difference to those, those contractors and the bituminous, I mean, what they're charging for, it's enormous, the difference. It super helps out the township and.
Well, I support it 100%.
Yeah, no, I, I know.
I just questioned this one, when the, the distance was like, ooh, a mackerel.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, all right, motion carries.
Next, Jim, next item is a purchase request. We are looking to purchase a new GPS unit. This was budgeted in last year's budget, during the 2025 budget, so we have, I think we put $50,000 in under our state contract with this vendor. We have a request amount of $41,153. So GPS units are kinda like computers, our one right now is over 10 years old. It's getting obsolete, but we still will be able to use it, but it will probably likely fail, and they don't make replacement parts for them anymore.
Any question, so do we have a motion to approve the new GPS unit?
It seems like just yesterday you got that.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the GPS.
Second, motion by Phil, second by Richard, or I'm sorry, by Barry.
Sorry, Richard, I insulted you.
What do you say sorry to him for?
He's sitting, he's sitting next to me. All right, I did, I do wanna say one thing, I looked at the bottom of this, and it where it said, the, the shipping and the, does not, shipping and setup doesn't even be included, but it actually is included, because the bot, the number, the bottom line or of the, of the amount that they're paying is $1,000, and that's for the person to deliver it and help set it up, so.
So there is no additional.
There is, there may be no additional charges. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, motion carries.
Last item is a request for our seasonal employees, we had a little discussion, we're seeking three to help in, out with maintenance and engineering activities. This is, we did budget for this, so it's included in our budget. It's kind of calculated at the maximum amount of 67 days at 10 hours a day. Typically, you know, if we get college students, they're, they're not there nearly that long, they're just there during the summer. But, you know, it's nice if we can get one or two that stay the full term, so.
Do we have a motion to approve 2D?
So moved.
Motion by Barry, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Erica, any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Human Resources, Tierra.
Good morning, the only item that I have is for transit, the three job descriptions for that department. So currently, we do have a bus driver position that is a grade three, and we're looking at adding in a dispatch-only position that would be at the grade three. We currently have a dispatch, dispatch driver position, looking to move that to a grade four.
Transit committee met with this?
Yeah, yeah, we did, yeah.
Recommend and approve?
Yep, recommend and approve. They need it, they absolutely need a person that can dispatch and drive. And, and, weren't you doing interviews like last week?
Yes, currently, we are, we're finished interviews, so we're in the process of selecting a candidate that would be a second full-time position, that would be also a dispatch and driver position.
Yeah, and I know Kevin drives a ton, so this is gonna help, hopefully help him not be in the bus so much.
I will move to approve Resolution 2252D. Oops, hold on, whoa, 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 that's the last one.
There wasn't a resolution for this, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, just to approve.
I'll move to approve the job description amendment, or?
Just job description.
Just job description.
Okay, just job description.
Do we, do we have a motion by Phil, do we have a second?
I think he didn't.
Richard's second, okay, all in favor?
I have a question.
Yes, discussion.
Now, now, you said Kevin's driving a lot, if Kevin doesn't drive a lot, what, what is he going to do?
He's, so he's not able right now to do his, what he's been hired to do as a supervisor. He, now, he, he does, one of his duties is to basically be a fill-in driver when, when needed. But he, like, he has to get ahold of the state a lot for the budgetary stuff, he has to, he'll, he'll dispatch sometimes if they need that. He's not able to do his, mainly his, what, what did he, what was his word?
He's a supervisor, he's the supervisor, he's supposed to oversee all this, but he's, can't fill bus drivers, so he's gotta drive bus.
So for example, when we're, he's, he needs to contact the state a lot of times because of certain issues, especially when no one wants, when they're trying to move his budget around and so forth, and he can't go on the phone and call them at opportune times, because he's in a bus.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I think one of the things that we're hoping this would eliminate is the amount of overtime that Kevin's spending.
And that was my next thing, he's getting a lot of overtime.
He's, he's probably doing a lot of the duties, like you're saying, perhaps not able to do some timely, but the hope would be that, I mean, he's working a ton of overtime to keep the bus going.
Thank you, Kerry.
Yeah.
That makes a big difference, and, I mean, when you think of it, if he's doing all these things and getting his job done, are we, you know.
Yeah, he's not.
Do you need to add more people, but when you have overtime, you start, yeah, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, he did say that he did have, he thought he had a good pool of candidates to get as bus drivers now, so he could go back to doing some of his supervising work that he should do.
And not overtime.
And not overtime.
Yeah.
Yep, and, and there were a lot of things he pointed out that were lacking. It was, it was a really good meeting for his budget, he answered every question I had, and was, was, he didn't.
And that's a lot. Thank you, though, I, I mean, it's, it's nice to get that little bit.
All right, do we have any further discussion, we have a motion and a second?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, no further business, we are adjourned.
Boy, our timing on this really sucks, it's supposed to be 10 o'clock right now. It's all good, I'm sorry for.